Okay, I'm going to call the meeting of the town council to order. We begin with roll call.
Councilmember Bailey?
Here.
Councilmember Beckman?
Here.
Councilmember Kohnhart?
Here.
Vice Mayor Andrews?
Here.
Mayor Vazia?
Here. First item, I'm reporting out from the closed session meeting. Oh, I'm sorry. Salute to the flag. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you were indivisible. Okay, first, reporting out, we just had a closed session meeting. There is nothing to report from that meeting. And I'm going to repeat what I reported out from the last closed session meeting we had on December 18th. I reported out after that. And that the town council made the decision to join litigation challenging the new rules the FCC recently issued regulating and streamlining local government approval processes for installation of small cell facilities in the public right-of-way by the Spiegel Law Firm in Washington, DC. And for the performance evaluation, there is nothing to report from that meeting. Correct? Got that? Okay, thank you. I will now open it up for public comment. If you have any public comment for an item not on the agenda, you can welcome to speak right now if you can please give your name and address, and please try to limit your comment to three minutes. Thank you so much.
Cheryl Lanchinati, Tamala Vista Boulevard. And I wanted to thank the Public Works Department for their work on Mohawk by Neil Cummins School. There was a ramp problem there that made it, the crosswalk, very difficult for people with strollers, and it was actually very dangerous. And Mohawk also has a problem with cars driving very fast. And the project is addressing both of those by putting bulbous for the, shortening the crossing distance and narrowing the roadway so that presumably, and I think research shows that vehicles travel more slowly. So I really am very glad that that project has been kind of sitting dormant for years. And with our new public works staff, they've taken it on, and it's almost at completion, and it looks really good. So I want to thank them.
Thank you. Earned it.
Patty Stollier, Age Friendly Corder Madera. In Carla's absence, I have to advertise tomorrow's Third Wednesday Speaker Series. Will I Have Enough Money is tomorrow at 11:00 AM at the Corder Madera Community Center. A free lecture, paying attention to finances and dealing with money are often on the back burner. Can We Make It Through Retirement? A discussion and question and answer with Stan Green, retired Certified Financial Planner, tomorrow at 11:00. Join us.
Thank you. Anyone else for an item not on the agenda? Okay, hearing none. We will move, we have two presentations. I'm going to turn it over to town staff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Briefly, I wanted to use the next few council meetings just to tell a few stories. This one is specific to the Town Hall Complex addition. Back a few meetings ago during the budget hearings of last year, staff asked the council to put a placeholder of approximately $2 million on the consideration of a project for a Town Hall Complex addition. And so with that, I kind of wanted just to have a discussion over a few meetings, talking about what the problem is, and then what are some potential solutions. And also, there's an action item with this presentation that I'm asking council to consider appointing up to two members of the council to our team as we move forward through a needs assessment on this project.
Okay, here we go. Mm-hmm. Yep. Can I see the? I always do this.
Okay, so really quickly, the history of Town Hall, I wish George Warman was here, but I'm going to do my best. The structure was built in 1931, and it was originally built to be a fire station.
Does he need the first employee to work here?
He is the second. Again, so we've, since that time, the structure was renovated in 1965 to be a new public safety building, specific really for fire. In 1992, the structure was used as a current Town Hall as we know it today to house the town manager and staff from the Departments of Finance, Planning, Building, and Public Works. And so upstairs, as you all know, we have a finance director, a town manager, we have our administrative analyst, our town clerk, and two accounting personnel. Downstairs houses all of our planning and building personnel, and public works is housed outside of the Town Hall Complex. So really, the problems, these aren't new, but they're concerning. The current complex does not meet California Building Standards Code. It also doesn't meet a number of ADA requirements, accessibility requirements dictated by the Federal American and Disabilities Act. And the current complex has issues that affect efficiency of staff. Our staff isn't currently situated together, which is problematic, not just for our staff, but for the community that comes in to get permits and get answers and work on projects. Really, the public works engineering team, planning and building, really work in concert with each other. And I'll just tell you that 70% of what we do really has to do with downstairs and helping our community with projects. The other thing, the current space does not meet, as I said, California building codes. It's the air quality, the ventilation system requirements, they're low, and they're really below satisfactory. One of the examples of that were the recent fires. You know, we kept our windows and doors closed, and after about a week of the fires this summer, I brought in an air quality reader, and downstairs was over 300, and it was bad. The ceiling height requirements are low for me, someone that's 6'5", there are three locations in that, downstairs, especially in the lobby area where my head actually hits the ceiling. There's barriers, barrier issues for termite prevention, lighting issues. You can read on and on. There's a number of code and kind of issues. I think our mayor's in the right, is that you, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, that is, actually, yeah.
So this was this week, we just took a picture, and we just kind of wanted to give you, just in, you know, this is a normal Monday, and really, you could have anywhere from four to nine people in that lobby area with our whole staff at the counter, and then people situated in that short lobby area with a low ceiling. And, you know, for me, it's, if I could do, if we could do anything as staff to add an amenity and help our public when they come in to have a nice counter space, a nice space to deal with our, and work with our staff members. Again, we have some restroom space issues, some issues with ADA requirements. We also have other issues. So we touched on it, the photo, you know, basically speaks to that, but our counter space is small offices. So we don't have enough office space for our people, and that's why we have three to four employees that are housed outside of the Town Hall Complex right now. But we're currently using closets for, to be used as workspaces, and I'll show you what I mean in a second. I mean, I'm just, that's no exaggeration, they're closets. We have insufficient storage space and inadequate restrooms. Our electrical infrastructure is over 60 years old. We house our IT staff in the IT server room, which is a closet. And again, we don't have a conference room or a community room to meet with staff and the public, and that's really something we would like to see moving forward. And here's the two closets I spoke of. So this is our code enforcement officer, and this is our IT staff member.
You don't give the IT guy a chair?
Well, that's extra. He has to bring it. So again, I think some other issues, not having staff together or having the right facilities. It's long wait times in the services that we provide our public from planning, building, and public works, lack of space, public meeting rooms, and again, a lot of the ADAs. So the solution, so staff, we really looked at this in three phases, and again, this has been a staff-level conversation, and I just want the council and the community to know that we haven't made any decisions. This is just something we've really looked internally to say, from a staff standpoint, what do we think this should look like from a phase and process standpoint? And then at the conclusion of this presentation, if council agrees, is to get the right people in the room for a working group, and that's possibly someone from the Planning Commission, council staff, our architect, and community members, and really work through this together. But as we looked at it in Phase One, we focused on that Town Hall addition. So what do we need? Well, we want to be to building code, we want to be ADA compliant, we want to have office space for up to 17 employees. That's our entire public works engineering staff, building and planning staff, they're all together in one place. And we'd like to have as many community amenities as possible, and we want to have, you know, a modern public permit counter with maximum efficiency. There's a second part of consideration for Phase One, and I haven't directed my staff to do this at this point because it's money. I want to be sensitive to taxpayer money, and I don't want to waste taxpayer money if it's unnecessary. So right now, I'm housing three to four employees in the firehouse. We recently consolidated with Larkspur. This firehouse right next door to us is the central firehouse for all the administrative staff for that consolidated fire department, and I'm causing major operational issues for both fire and public works at this point because they just, they're cramped, they don't have enough space. So I did list leasing property and moving staff offsite as a possibility. I've looked at that over the last year, and I'll tell you, the leasing is anywhere from $80,000 to $100,000 annually, and I can't keep all my staff together in one location. I'm going to have to have them separated. And so really, if I lease property at this point, it's the public works engineering team that would be moving. Phase Two, if we were to complete Phase One with the Town Hall addition, staff would recommend possibly retrofitting and updating the downstairs the best we can to have a community amenity, right? It could be bringing a Chamber of Commerce here, it could be adding a community room, bringing some amenities to the community and space, bringing them to our facility. And Phase Three potentially would be to focus on the upstairs. As you know, we renovated the town offices upstairs, but possibly updating the council chambers as a Phase Three, and really looking at a five-year plan for these phases. So at this point, again, there are a lot of opportunities for us and space in this community to focus on the shopping center, town park, all of our town-owned spaces to move a civic center. But really, when we look at our infrastructure needs in the next five years and 50 years, as we've talked about, all the issues that we face in flood and fire, infrastructure, and what we're trying to accomplish, there really just isn't enough money to accomplish everything. And so money matters, and I just, I feel like we can accomplish something that's a 50-year-plus fix at a low $2 to $3 million cost, and I, it really has brought me back to this current site. And so we can, and it's for the working group to work through, we can look at other sites, but you're going to take that project from $2 to $3 million, and it's going to go upwards of, you know, $10 million easily. And so I just, from a staff member, your manager, I'm just not comfortable even bringing that before this council and recommending it. I don't think it's necessary. But again, there's lots of work to be done, and that'll be the working group. I think some other things, the preservation and protection of the historical identity of the town, this building, it wasn't pretty back in 1931 when George started, and we've tried to do our best to make it nice, but there are some things that we can do to the outside to add some design and to make it what we want it to be. And again, you can see my other bullet points, but I think really the last one is it's a town-owned structure, location, we have no lease expenses. Parking is probably one of the biggest kind of conversation points here, but what I want to point out to the council and the community, as we've worked with, believe it or not, the post office on parking, we found out that their staff was taking up, you know, 10% to 15% of our parking spaces daily. They no longer take those spaces. So we currently, during the daytime, do not have parking issues. On the west side of the firehouse, on the Pixley side, there's a number, I believe there's seven or eight parking spaces with the potential to add more. If we did do something on this site, we would ask our employees to take that as employee parking on the outside. So we would actually have a net gain ultimately of parking within our complex. And so based on a variety of factors, we're recommending consideration for this current site, but again, that is not for staff to decide, that is for the working group to work through and recommend to council and the Planning Commission. So our next steps are to establish a working group, which will consist of our architect, our staff, again, recommend two, up to two council members. I'll tell you that councilmember Beckman and Vice Mayor Andrews have offered and showed interest in that, so I will share that with you. Again, the next step too would be a needs assessment, design concepts, public input, again, our office space, up to 17 employees and the community amenities. We would have a workshop and study session with the Planning Commission and the community. We would also probably go through the design review process with the Planning Commission, and ultimately back to the council. So we see this, there was a schedule that was shared earlier, that's an aggressive schedule. We really see 2019 is going through these steps and seeing where we go. It may slow down, it may speed up, it just depends on the process, but that's our recommended process. I will tell you, from a staff standpoint and efficiency standpoint, that we have to do something. This isn't something we can put out for five years. We need to do it, the money is there, this project is, and we'll talk about it in one of the upcoming business items, and I'll show you some money, but basically, this isn't competing with any other projects. It's not at the expense of any of our priority projects. And so with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Todd. Are there any questions from the council on this?
Yes. One.
Thank you, Todd. If the downstairs is to be renovated, won't there be a period of time when there's temporary leasing required, or at least vacating and doing something different for some months?
Yeah, so we're looking at, you know, that'll be with Peter and his team, but if they were to build the addition first, and the addition would go parallel to this building right here, these parking spaces are parallel to Tampa Pius, our people would be able to still stay in this building, and then we transfer over. And then at a later date, once we are in the new building downstairs and the budget allows, and the council and community agree, we would look at maybe the future year, 12, 24 months, let's do something downstairs. And then possibly a fiscal year after that, we would look at Phase Three, let's look at the council chambers. And so really kind of developing a three- to four-year plan. We're also at some point going to have to consider having modulators on the west side of the firehouse where the parking spaces are that I spoke about, and putting the public works engineering team there, the contractors, and that'll be another space. To your point, if we have to move personnel, that's where they'll be.
Temporary.
For a temporary.
Any other questions from the council?
So you said space for 17 employees, roughly how many square foot?
Up to five.
Yeah, between four and five.
Between four and 5,000 square feet.
Any further questions? Then I will open it up to the public. I can do that with the presentation, right? If anybody has questions or comments, I would ask that you come to the microphone now, please, and please give your name and address, and limit your comments to three minutes. Thank you so much.
Councilman and staff, Michael Harlock, 533 Redwood. I kind of started this new year next door without the knowledge that Todd has wonderfully provided about what's going on, and I have to admit, I've been an ostrich, but I just started talking about the fact that Corder Madera could use some visioning about what a civic center, where, and how a civic center could be created. And then I did my homework, and Todd and the staff have been tremendously helpful in filling me in, as you just noted, about what the needs are. And the needs are definite, and I think pronounced. I think, I don't have any great solutions, except to note that the town has a lot of contiguous property between Park Madera, the park, and the fire station, the post office, and this site. And ideally, and maybe this is not possible within the current parameters, I would love to see the town really decide from an urban design point of view where an ultimate civic identity could be created in bringing some of these functions together. My concern with what has been described pretty definitely as a new building next to this one, and I understand the, there's no plans, and I do support committee and public involvement to identify the program, the appropriate program. But I guess my concern, it's a bit of regret that we seem to be pushed into a solution here. And I know there's no building design, but it is a commitment to this site that has Todd chaired maybe 50 years. So this will be our city hall. Is this the best place? Are there other alternatives? I'm just wondering if the temporary needs could be filled with some kind of temporary, less than a $3 million, $3,400, $3,500 square foot investment in this site. I know all the complic-, I don't know all the complications of Park Madera, although I have a general understanding that it's, that it's complex. There I am. So I would hope that we might broaden our vision, and for these temporary needs, maybe look to something that's less expensive in the way of temporary provisions.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you. Any other member of the public have questions or comments? Then I will bring it back to the council for any further comments or direction or ideas, first off. Yes, love.
How many people on the working committee? Working group, whatever?
So it's work in progress. It'll be the architect and his, and her team, our staff, which is probably anywhere from three to four people, up to two council members, if we want to add a community member or someone from the Planning Commission.
So that was where I was going with that. It would, I don't know if you guys are, it would seem to me to make perfect sense to have a couple of our citizens. Michael's an excellent choice, he's an architect, he knows, and he's got vision. And I also would recommend somebody from the Planning Commission. We have several viable candidates here in our chambers tonight. So I, maybe you don't have to make all those decisions tonight, but my only two cents on that was unless it's going to create an efficiency morass, I would really like to see a member of the Planning Commission, at least one, as well as at least a couple, three community types.
I'll meet that two cents.
I think that's a great idea, because this is one of those things we can't have too much input on. I mean, we don't want to slow the process down, but I think the more input we get, the better, because this is going to be a very public building, and we need to get, make sure we have as much input from the community as possible before we make any decisions. So I think that's a terrific idea. I would agree with you.
Thank you.
Any further questions or input or comments? We have, you can see we don't rehearse this stuff beforehand. We have two volunteers who want to join the group. Are you guys, is everyone okay with that?
You guys verbally agree with that?
Absolutely.
You're okay? You're going to take this on?
Yep.
You go to a lot of meetings.
I know.
Okay, you're up. So then we will appoint Mr. Beckman and Mr. Andrews.
Do you need a motion or something?
Oh, do we need a motion, or how does that work?
In one person nominated or appointed by the Planning Commission?
Or do you want just a direction, and then you could bring it back to you for another meeting to like figure out how to formally put it together? So our direction is as follows.
Okay.
Not as follows as we just said.
So Jim just had a question.
Oh, sorry.
For the Planning Commission, do we just ask for volunteers, or do we appoint someone, or?
I think you should ask them at the meeting.
Ask them to.
Figure it out.
Ask them to figure it out.
Because it's a lot of time.
It's a great idea.
Okay. Peter, does that work for you?
Okay. Thank you. I think, did I cover everything on this item? Todd, you were good? You got everything you need?
I did, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Then we have a second presentation on townwide staffing, which is discussion continued from our December 18th meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So I wanted to continue the conversation we had about staffing from the last meeting. So at the last meeting, we wanted to, what we wanted to do is we wanted to give you an overview. Thank you. We wanted to give you an overview of our staffing, and really, you know, when you think about the reoccurring revenues and reoccurring expenditures to our general fund, our operating budget, right? That really supports, 80% of that is staff. It's staff-related, and so I wanted to have an early conversation with council, and really just have a series of conversations, and then put a really simplistic document in the budget online, available for all of us in the community when we think about budget. We have a good understanding of personnel, right? What are we trying to accomplish, and how are we going to accomplish it? And after that, I want to share with you of what staff has done to really learn about the history, evaluate the future, and put redundancies in place to make sure that we never have to, heaven forbid, freeze a position or lay somebody off based on decisions we make today. And so I wanted to share that with you. So historically, this permanent staffing summary right here, if everybody could see it, this is really our previous budgets. Whenever George Warman would give us an update on the budget and talk about personnel, this is the document that you would see. And so for the council members that have been on the council for a while, this probably looks familiar. What I want to point out to the council is here, for many budget hearings, you heard town staffing was at its peak in fiscal year 2002, 2003, when there were 62.2 full-time positions due to the national economic collapse. In the fall in 2008, the staffing reduced up to 31% from 62 to 43.25, and I think a couple, the mayor and a couple council members said, hey, your presentation doesn't really speak to what we've heard all these years. And so this is an accurate statement. But what I've tried to do is I want to break this up into pieces when you think about long-term sustainability. Why do we share services? Why do we consolidate? What really are we trying to do? And so I want to go to this document here, and so what we're going to do is we're going to talk about our town staff, really from administration, finance, public works, planning, building, and parks and recreation. You have to blow it up, you don't want to go to those ones. And so we're going to leave fire and police out. And so what we've done from 2008, you can see on the spreadsheet to present, it's the yellow bars, the three yellow bars in finance, public works, and planning and building. And we've supplemented those frozen positions that we lost going from 62 to 43, and we've supplemented help with contract employees. That's really how we've solved the problem over the last few years. Okay, that's not going to work. Tell me when. There you go. So I should probably be, can you see that now? Let's go to...
No, just your words are probably good enough, Todd.
Well, I want to show some numbers. Okay, can everyone see this kind of, sort of, for the most part? Okay. So I want to tell you the story of consolidation, and so...
I can't see it at all, so you're going to have to explain it to me. It's okay, go ahead.
Okay. So there's two things on this, on this page, and it's at the top. So if you look at the top, I went back to fiscal year 1516, and I worked my way forward for three fiscal years to show you a view. And so police, they're already consolidated, right? And so the Central Marine Police Authority was consolidated in 2013, and so you can see our, you can see our numbers there. And so what I did is I took, I added fire. And so from a public safety standpoint, I wanted to show you our costs with public safety, because really, you can't control or even devise a plan of long-term sustainability with staff unless you figure out the public safety aspect. For us, public safety is a reoccurring revenue of about 38% of our general operating revenues. Compare us with other entities, entities go all the way up to 50% of public safety, and that gives you an idea. That 12% difference in cushion allows us then to maintain induced things with service that other entities can, and I want to tell you that story. So that first line up there, so when you look at police and fire, you can see how they ebbed and flowed. Police in 1516, fiscal year 1516, were about $3 million, fire was just under $5 million. So to think about that in perspective, fire and police in an agency our size should be within a half a million dollars of each other in any given year, and the difference of that half a million dollars really depends on services. Here, paramedic services, so that's a difference. Or if you buy a big fire engine, a big fire engine's $500,000, where, you know, police cars are $40,000. Here, you had this big discrepancy, and it was, and we were, we were experiencing with standalone agencies... agencies our size experience, having your standalone fire agency. We were probably paying probably about $1.5 million more than we needed to do if we would have consolidated over a decade ago. But we didn't, and that's okay. But if you go to 1516, what we started to do is we started to share services with Larksburg. And we saved about $100,000 that first year. The next year, we started merging services. So we are completely operationally merged as an agency, but we weren't yet consolidated. We didn't form our JP, our Joint Powers Authority yet because of our CalPERS issues. But you could see that savings, how we started to reduce costs really fast. And then again, in fiscal year 1819, we formed the JPA. Now, costs went up. That's partly because of pension cost, but we still kept costs down. But what we also did is we added, we eliminated the duplication of redundancies between two agencies, but we added services. We added a full-time fire marshal, prevention services. We have over a half a million dollars of prevention services we've never had before in our town. We improved our paramedic service and we added two additional officers, or two additional firefighters to ensure that we had three-person engine companies. And that was a big deal. And so then if you go down and you compare, if we didn't do anything at all, so go back to 1516 and let's just say we didn't share services, we didn't merge, you can see how the numbers would have flowed. It would have started just under $5 million. It would have stayed steady at just under $5 million. It would have dropped a little bit in 1718. That's our side fund payment that we paid off of $366,000. That's why it stayed flat. And then you would see it start to increase to $5 million. So now what I did is I compared what we have done and if we didn't do anything, and I showed the savings, right? And so it's right here. So it's comparing it. So again, we saved $100,000 by sharing services in 1617. We saved 400, just under $450,000 by merging our services. And today, this fiscal year, we've saved a half a million dollars annually by merging and consolidating with Larksburg. So just compare, what did we do? What opportunity did we allow ourselves over the last three years and what we've done? We've saved $1 million in improving our services, not maintaining or reducing, improving our services, but allowing now $1 million to go do something else. Well, what have we done? We currently, we currently dedicate $1.25 million to our trust funds to pay off unfunded liabilities. The $366,000 side fund payment and the, and our own opportunity that we made for ourselves, that's what we did. We didn't tax additional monies to our citizens. We didn't cut services. That's what we did. So then what I wanted to do is I wanted to show comparison because we like to compare, right? So I compared ourselves, and now this is a police services conversation as an example because we've been doing it longer. But what I'm telling you is something I've studied for the last decade, and I don't want to say that I'm an expert in new one, a good field, but I understand public safety and service. And what I'm telling you is within our size, within a half a million dollars, that's what we should be paying for both of our services. So I'm going to use the police example, but fire definitely holds true here. So, Corder Madera, Larksburg, San Onomoh, they all consolidated police services. Corder Madera and Larksburg were consolidated in 1980, so we're going to start with them. So in 2008, 2009, Corder Madera paid $3.1 million for police services, Larksburg paid 3.3. 10 years later, Corder Madera pays 3.5, Larksburg pays 3.9. So our police, our cost for police services went up $400,000 annually over a 10-year span, right? Is that good or bad? We don't know yet, right? So let's go down, let's compare ourselves to our friends in San Onomoh. San Onomoh was on a clip, kind of like we talked about with our own Corder Madera Fire Department. They paid $4.4 million for police services in LA. They were on a track when we analyzed them in 2012, by 1819, to be paying about $5.7 million for police services with what the CalPERS was coming and all the issues that they were going to have. And so that's really why they consolidated, one of the main reasons. And if you look at them 10 years later, after a few years of the consolidation, they pay less for police services than they did 10 years ago. I don't know anyone in the state of California that can say that in public safety. So then let's compare ourselves to Sausalito and Mill Valley, similar agencies. Now, they have standalone services for police. Sausalito's a population of 7,500. Their needs and issues of what they need for infrastructure are very similar to Corder Madera. Mill Valley is actually very similar to both Corder Madera and Larksburg. 15,000 population, but their services and needs are very similar. In 08, 09, they paid 4.4. Mill Valley did. Mill Valley pays $6.2 million for police services today. They have gone up $1.7 million in a 10-year span. Sausalito, same thing. They've almost gone up $2 million in that span. Unique to them, what I'll point out, is they rely heavily on parking services. And so a half a million dollars of each of their budgets are dedicated to parking and they bring in the same amount. So even if you back that cost out, they pay $1.5 million for those services over a 10-year span. That is where the opportunity lays for us in staffing and consolidating opportunities. This can't continue this trend for a lot of cities and towns. And so you have to share your services and opportunities. We've done that and it's been extremely successful. The other thing with staffing that's important to point out is the service delivery comparison. So someone our size, 10,000 population, you can do the best you can to have the best services, but you can only do what you have, what's available to you. But by consolidating like we did with Central Marin Police Authority, it serves a population of 35,000. But the comp, the comparison for those services, a full-service station, experienced detectives, a full-service traffic team, dispatching, administration, I list some examples on page two, our comparison is Nevada Police Department. And so that's extremely, extremely successful. I list the examples of the enhanced services, but they're across the board. We've talked about them a lot and I won't, I won't touch on them at this point. The last piece that I want to say then, I want to come back to here. I want to come back to this document. And so what I did is I took police and fire out of the conversation. And so if you looked at our best years, from 1999 to 2008, really when we really had full staffing, we averaged in these five departments approximately 34 employees. Right now, we currently have 30.5. And we're supplementing the remaining to get to that 34 by contract work. So what I want to tell you is we're not doing more with less. We have the needs that we need based on the history of Corder Madera. But what I want to tell you is that we have huge infrastructure needs and there's a lot of challenges. And yes, we do need to consider backing out of a couple of the contracts and consider full-time employees. And historically, our finance director, and I agree with them, it was to, we want to, we want to be flexible, we want to be fluid. And so you don't want to have full-time employees because of the cost, the overhead cost. Well, new employees are post-pension reform. So a new employee compared to a classic employee like me that has been here since 1995, if you compare dollars for dollars for positions, new to classic, there's a $30,000 or $40,000 difference in benefits because of that reform. The other thing that we want to think about, there is so much to this town that you need to know. And a contract employee, when you talk about succession planning, understanding our community, providing the service that we want, holding into that expectation, the positions that we need to consider, maybe backing out of contract help and considering one additional hire is in public works engineering and in the planning department. And those are the two departments that you need to understand the history. You have to be good with people and you have to understand what the expectation is. And so that's something I wanted to highlight for you because we're going to continue that conversation leading into the fiscal year. And I just want to give you one other, one other point and I will stop. And it has to do with our forecasting models. Oh, gosh, okay. What I wanted to share with you is we've built in a number of redundancies, right? And so, how do I get it to one page for you? So I want to focus on this last page and so...
Engineer handle. To zoom.
Excel.
Well, I wanted to say, does everybody remember the forecasting models? This is a George Warman document. We always had it in our, in our budgets. And this is really where the rubber meets the road. It's reoccurring revenues to reoccurring expenses. Do we have our, we got them all still? Okay. So a previous page, what happened, what happened to us, we're unique. And so when you look at the town of Corder Madera and you compare us to others, because people always say, well, what is our fiscal sustainability? How do we compare to other people? We actually, reoccurring revenues to reoccurring expenditures, if you compare us in relation to everyone in Sonoma and Marin County per capita, we are number two. We're number two out of everybody in the most revenue. We actually outclipped Sausalito, Larksburg, and San Onomoh by $3 million annually, and it's really our sales tax base. So we're a sales, sales tax town. And so what happened to us in '02, '03, the first fiscal crisis happened, the economic downturn. And so as that happened, we started to recover slowly. And in 2006, when we bought the shopping center that has turned into an asset to us today, at the time, the timing was bad for us. Because what we did is we used a lot of our funding and cash to purchase it, and then 2008 happened. And 2008 was the worst economic downturn that we've seen in the last 50 years. And so those three decision points, those three factors caused us to go from 62 employees to 45. And so evaluating that, we went back and said, okay, what is the biggest hit to us? Like what, if we're fully staffed, what is the worst that can happen to us and let's add to it? And so it was a $700,000 loss annually for five years to our sales tax base. And so we've built redundancies into the system. And so today, what I want to share with you is our fiscal health. And so our fiscal health today, if you go back to 20, to 2012, 13, all the way to 1819, you can see, these are our surpluses. So this is where our revenues are outperforming our expenditures. And so with that, we've begun to build reserves and we have begun to build a plan for the next evolution of decision-making. And so this is an example, this is the '02, '03 to 1112. That's, that's what happened to us. And so we have redundancies in the system. And so what I'll tell you is that we are positioned as a town currently, as we go out, that if the worst economic downturn happened again, what we would do is based on the surpluses that we've already built, we can continue our current staffing and service delivery through seven years of the worst downturn that we've ever experienced in 50 years without touching reserves, without touching our trust funds. If that downturn continued for another five years and doubled, so went from 700,000 to 1.4 million, what we would do is we would consider not putting, we would look at the $1.2 million we're currently funding our trust funds. And we'd have a conversation of do we want to lower service delivery or do we just not want to make payments to a trust fund for a period of years? If the economic downturn went 700,000 worse than that for another five years, what we would talk about would be our contract services, which is that amount. If we had another $700,000 on top of that, so four times the amount, what we would do is we would have a conversation about our reserve funds. We'd have a conversation about using the trust funds. And so there were five redundancies built into our budget. And as we tell the story over the next year, we'll be able to tell it simplistically. But my point is staff would not ask you for a full-time position if I thought, man, we might have an economic downturn in the next year or two. There's been some great work of the team with the finance committee, with the vice mayor. We're excited to tell the story. Hey, we're not out of the woods, but we have a plan at least. And we're prepared, and we're better prepared than our other agencies. And so that's my story on staffing and our budget. Thank you.
Are there any questions from the council? Yes, Jim.
What is our final status with CalPERS?
Microphone.
In the new, sorry, what's the final status with CalPERS in the consolidated fire department? Has that been fully approved? All the paperwork done, everything or?
Yeah, so CalPERS has approved our, has approved the, from their perspective, they're going to allow us to proceed with our contract. They are now completing an actuarial report that'll then show the financial ramifications of that consolidation, and it'll go before the fire council in February for approval. But that is an important financial document that you have to have. And then there's a period of days, grace period days that we have to wait. So we are moving forward with that. So it will happen.
All right, good.
Any questions or comments from the public? Yes, please. Please come to the microphone and state your name.
Are we still paying, recording?
We're recording. You're on TV. We need it for the record, sorry.
Just curious, are we, Peter Hensel, Willow Avenue, are we still paying off Park Madera Center? I wasn't quite clear on that. And so what are we paying and how far out is that?
Yeah, just really quickly. So as you know, Park Madera Center was purchased in 2006. Over that period of time, we have refinanced our debt payment. So we currently owe about $9.4 million on Park Madera Center. Park Madera Center was recently appraised through the refinance at $12 million. Again, it was appraised by our Bay Cities Insurance Pool at $13 million this last year. So right now, we owe about 9.5. It's worth about $13 million appraised. And we currently bring in more revenue than expenditures at approximately $20,000 to $30,000 annually. So that's the good news. We, we're in the positive. We can take a deep breath. And the mayor and the council at a recent retreat has also asked us to start a series of community conversations about what we'd like to do with that shopping center in the future. It has now turned in, no matter how you feel about it or how we got here, it's an asset. And so it's one of our very few community assets where we're finally in the positive, and it's an opportunity for us and we'll be having conversations in the future.
Thank you. Any other questions? Comments? I just had one, which is, I got on the council in 2007, right after Park Madera was purchased. And things were so bad in '08, '09, and '10, we had to do a short-term financing deal called a trans, which George created, which it cost us $200,000 a year to borrow enough money to get enough cash to make sure we could pay the bills for five or six months. So this is wonderful. Thank you. So much better to know that we have reserves and we don't have to worry about that kind of stuff anymore. So thank you for all your work on this. We're going to move to the consent calendar. The purpose of the consent calendar is to approve all items by a single motion. Is there any member of the council who would like to remove an item from the consent calendar?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would like to request the pulling of 4D for some couple of clarification questions.
Okay, so we'll pull 4D. Is there any member of the public who'd like to request removal of an item from the consent calendar?
I'll move that we, if there's no...
Hang on, wait, there's a member of the public?
Oh, is there? Sorry.
You want to pull something else besides 4D, Peter?
Uh, no, 4D is what I want.
Okay, well, we're going to pull 4D.
Yeah, okay, cool.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
So we're going to pull 4D and I think we deal with 4D first then, correct?
No, I'll move for the others unless you want to...
We're going to move for the others?
Yep.
Okay, great.
If there's no other comments from, then I will move that we approve items 4A through 4H with the exception of 4D.
Second. Oh, sorry.
Got two seconds here.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Beckman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuhnhardt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Andrews?
Yes.
Mayor of Ozio?
Yes. Okay, then we'll come back to item 4D. We will pull that and I'm going to turn it over to staff to talk about item 4D.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, Peter Brown, Public Works Department. As you read in the staff report written by Senior Civil Engineer RJ Suko, this is the Central Marin Regional Pathways Gap Closure Project. Prior to any of your current public work staff being employed here with the town, the town applied for grant money through the state's Active Transportation Program, which as you all know is primarily focused on getting people to bike and walk safely about their communities. And they were successful. So the grant team at the time put together this application, and I think to the shock to a lot of people, the statewide program gave the council $415,000, I think 55 of which is local match. And your council approved the acceptance of that reward and the allocation of what amounts to a small amount of money to move the project forward. This money, as you all know, is for design and environmental clearance, so engineering work and environmental documents, sequel documents. Town staff advertised the request for proposals in September, and we did receive a qualified team. And that's basically what this item is about. It's about awarding state funds that the council has already accepted to a design firm that could really get us through the design and environmental clearance phase. We spoke about this project in December with the BPAC Committee, the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. And of course, you know, town staff believes that this is a good, good contract and is a good designer and that your council should award the funds today as suggested. A little bit more on kind of the details of the project, I think some of you saw this particular slide in the BPAC Committee, and so the main part of the project we're talking about is along Wornham, which is here in purple. And then the other part of the project is along Nellin, which would provide bike lanes, and really, the key is a crossing across Pfeiffer here. Pfeiffer Avenue, as you all know, has two hook ramps, kind of old, out of Caltrans standard on and off ramps. Pedestrian access across that is quite difficult. And so I think that from the state grant agencies, they felt like there's enough issues here that it was worthwhile. And what I've since received, a few emails from the council and from the public kind of asking, well, what about the broader picture? What's really happening here globally in terms of current and future improvements? And RJ put together this slide today, just kind of talking about all the different things that are going on. So as you all know, the current project along 101, that is, there's a bike path, I think it's a bike and ped path, it's around three and a half, four feet wide, is being replaced, and that is being widened. And so there's going to be brand-new and enhanced pedestrian access across this 101 bridge to connect to the train station, the Smart Train, Larkspur Landing, and of course, these pathways that get you up into the Bon Air Center and into Green Bay and Larkspur. That project is underway. In short, part of the money that the regional government, TAM, and the county, and MTC had been looking at funding for some portion of this particular project, the North-South Greenway, was reallocated last year to the Smart Train project in Santa Fel. They were shovel-ready, they were building the train line, they needed money for the bike path, and so the regional decision was made that the money that was previously envisioned for Corder Madera would go to Santa Fel and Smart to complete the trail along the train that's down here. And then, again, you can kind of see, along Redwood Highway, future improvements are also planned in the city of Larkspur. So globally, there are a lot of bicycle and pedestrian needs here, there's a lot of facilities in place, but I would go so far as to say almost all of them are in need of upgrade. And so the way that the Public Works staff sees this is, it's a good idea to use the grant funds to complete the design and engineering, basically at the statewide taxpayer's expense, with a small portion being paid for by the town. And again, just one more slide to kind of look at the specifics of this particular project. As I told BPAC, this is the money we really need, and I hate to bring it to you now, but our last application for construction funds was denied last week, or maybe two weeks ago by the state. So we didn't compete well statewide against all the other needs, so we'll continue to seek funds for that. If we're not successful in seeking construction funds for Nellin in particular, I think I would recommend, I would come back to council, we would look at some of the pedestrian improvements we could fund in-house to get folks safely across Pfeiffer, and we would certainly ask council to consider using local funds to improve the Wornham pathway. I'm not sure that I could make a strong case that, for the expense that it would be without using outside grant funds, that investing in Nellin at the present time would be very wise. So I think that summarizes my presentation. If anybody has any other questions, I'm happy to take them. RJ is available as well.
Are there any questions from the council regarding this?
A couple.
Yeah, go ahead.
So far, the yellow portion, the portion that is east of that yellow portion down there, is in early environmental evaluation, but it is not funded in any way. Is that correct?
I can answer that. So currently, TAM is the project sponsor for the North-South Greenway Southern segment, and they gave the lead to the county, and they set aside $1.2 million for the project approval and environmental document.
Set aside, but it's not yet.
So it was authorized.
Right.
So that's already, they have the authority to move forward with that. And then that actual phase for the consulting was actually less than the $1.2 million that was set aside, and so there is belief that the $1.2 could actually fund the project potentially through final design.
Great.
So that's not a guarantee, but it's close. It's in the ballpark of getting through final design with the $1.2.
And the borders of the project that's in front of us tonight are just the purple. No more. This doesn't influence whether we're doing something going around the village, it doesn't indicate whether we're doing anything that leads to Corder Madera Square, it doesn't do anything about anything beyond the oval that is on that map.
Correct.
Is that correct? Okay, that's, those were my questions. Thank you very much. And I guess I would say that as you're, as the town's TAM rep, I have been pushing hard for that North-South Greenway reconnection, and helped to make sure that that's in the works, and will continue to.
Are there any other questions from the council? Okay, then we're going to open up to the public for comment on this item. Anybody who would like to speak, if you can, please come up and give your name.
Again, Peter Hensel, Willow Avenue, hello to you all. I think it's important to look at language here, you know, the way this contract's written. It says, "The contract with Parisi is for environmental documentation and a final design of the Central Marin Regional Pathways Gap Closure Project." So that's pretty clear, you know. You might say, well, it doesn't preclude Redwood Highway, but I think it does. I mean, the language is very specific. You can't go back later and say, make, apply for another grant fund and say, well, this is the second gap closure. I mean, so we're basically taking this Wornham Drive to Sandra Marker Trail. And this is another problem I really have with a staff report, is that, you know, staff reports, you know, if you're going to make a link, you should show where it begins, where it ends. There's no graphics in this staff report. I mean, you guys got some slides here, but there's no graphics in the staff report. So that's, you know, a big failing, as far as I'm concerned. I'd also like to know, who wrote the request for state active transportation grant funds? Was it Public Works or BPAC, or was it a joint effort? And did the request stipulate funds for Central Marin Regional Pathways Gap Closure? Because that's really important, because you can't go back to them again and say, hey, well, we decided we're going to now evaluate Redwood Highway. I mean, you basically kicked Redwood Highway out of this thing. And that's really a problem for me, because this is a hugely controversial issue. You know, if you pre-approve, basically, that Corder Madera is going to, you know, you know, close this gap to Wornham, then Sandra Marker Trail, then the Mups, and then basically what that does, it takes you directly to Old Town Square. And then what do we do there? You know, the bikers are going to say, oh, Alto, you know, Camino Alto Hill, way too steep. So what are you left with? You're left with the tunnel. And then we're going to have a big debate about the tunnel. The county, you know, plan, basically, I mean, it was 175 pages in 2010, you know, it was very clear, there's tables, summaries, that says that, you know, Horse Hill is basically the least impactful and the most cost-effective way of closing the gap. And we're eliminating, you know, the path to Horse Hill here, and that's a real problem for me. I think Bob Ravasio, he is Chair of the BPAC, I salute him for that, he's our mayor, I salute him for that, you know, for basically his comeback from injury, that's not fun, you know. People tell me I'm next door, I'm a bike hater. I am not. This is, you know, a jersey that I bought, because I watch the, every summer I watch the Tour de France, you know. But what I want is safe planning for bikes that doesn't compromise infrastructure in Corder Madera.
Thank you. Is there any member of the public who would like to speak? Yes, please.
Cheryl Longinati, and I guess in full disclosure, I should say that I'm a member of the BPAC. And I want to clarify, maybe have a conversation with Peter on the side, but funding this project would not be exclusive, it does not really exclude any other option. As a matter of fact, our 2016 bicycle pedestrian plan has 30 projects on it, and number 30 is what we informally called Kirby's Crossing, which goes right from Horse Hill over to, over across 101. Also, later tonight, you'll be talking about the capital improvements priorities, and one of those projects that will be discussed will be improvements to Casa Buena, which leads right over Horse Hill. So in no way has Horse Hill been forgotten. And as a person who spends a lot of time walking and biking and also driving a motor vehicle, I know the importance of multiple routes, particularly routes that keep people away from cars, but multiple routes is always really useful. So I think some of your presumptions, Peter, are off-base, and if you want to talk more about it later, we can.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak on this matter from the public?
David McPherson, Corder Madera Avenue, also on the BPAC. Obviously, this has been in the works for maybe close to a decade now, and it probably doesn't need that much reinforcing, but the Pfeiffer construction is so crucial for those commuters that are utilizing the bus. And of course, the Wornham path gets, I'm going to say, close to 1,000 cyclists, many of them going to and from the ferry, and on certain days, we can reach close to 100 kids going back and forth. So the fact that we got these state funds, the fact that Parisi, who's proven to be extremely nimble in terms of public outreach and being able to flexibly design these projects, I encourage the council to approve it.
Thank you. Any other member of the public like to speak on this topic? If not, I will bring it back to the council for comments.
I don't know if, I want to, can I ask staff questions, though, or do you need to? Can I?
We can still ask questions, and I just wanted to add, point out one other thing. I received an email prior to the meeting, and I thought Mr. Hensel was going to bring it up, requesting that I recuse myself from this, because I'm the chairman of the BPAC. But I spoke to the town attorney, and I will ask her to reiterate right now your comments on that.
There is no legal conflict with the mayor participating on this item.
Okay, thank you, but we did check that, I just wanted to make sure we covered that up. Okay, so you, yes, Sloane, you have a question?
I have a question. I don't know, Peter, probably you. Sorry, you may be on, I don't know. First of all, do you agree with the, I'm going to ask two questions, then you can answer how you like. Do you agree with the position that by approving this, we're sort of implicitly laying the pathwork, if you will, for an Alto Tunnel connection rather than Horse Hill? And then secondly, regardless of how you answer that, if we were to go, if we had, let's presume that we had already decided we were going to do the Horse Hill crossing and not Alto Tunnel, what would be different about this map? If you can, or you, I don't know, whatever you think.
Thank you, Councilmember Bailey. Just a couple of points then to answer your question, and also to highlight some of the remarks from Mr. Hensel. First of all, no, I don't believe that designing and getting environmental clearance for this particular project, which I know it has a broad title to, Mr. Hensel made a good point, the Central Marin Regional Gap Closure Project, it sounds like a really big thing, but that was just the title in the grant that we applied for, and it only applies to the purple area. So I could understand if he's reading the staff report, I agree with him, we should include some graphics and become more clear, we can do that going forward, but we're only talking about this little connection. To the point that Ms. Longinati made, bicyclists and pedestrians take all kinds of different routes for all kinds of different reasons. So the way someone comes here through perhaps a future Nellin-Wornham connection to the Sandra Marker Trail, they could be heading towards Alto Tunnel, they could be heading towards Equator and Larkspur, they could have multiple destinations. The same is true for anyone who wants to continue along the Redwood Path, or take the new Tamal Vista Complete Streets project over to Tamal Pius Drive. There are so many different routes and options that many different people will take and choose. So I do not believe that this particular improvement does anything related to Alto Tunnel, other than improve the facility within, you know, a mile or two of where Alto Tunnel may or may not ever become. So that's the way I would answer that. Did I answer both your questions?
I think so. I mean, I want you to assume, I'm sorry, could I ask another question, Mr. Mayor? I want you to assume, forget about Alto Tunnel, we had already had some big meeting, and we decided that it was going to be the Horse Hill thing. Does that mean, then, that the presumption here is it would only go down Redwood Highway, and those other paths would not be improved?
I don't believe so. So again, you know, without, with a difference of between 30 to 60 seconds, depending on how fast you ride. Anyone who comes through this particular area, they're going to have multiple choices of how to get over to Tamal Pius, the street right over Pius, which you have to cross, whether you're going to Horse Hill, or to Corder Madera Ave, or Chapman, or any of the many ways there are to go over to Mill Valley and south to Sausalito. And so there's just, there's many ways to go, and I prefer that they all be safe routes.
Okay, thank you, Peter.
We have actually had some informal conversations about that, and we've talked about taking people down Tamal Vista over, I guess Mohawk, and then down...
Oh, really?
Yeah, that way, so that, you know, it would basically continue to use this, but if you take people down Redwood Highway, you've got to get back over 101 somehow, which is expensive and difficult, so...
That's why I was asking, that's exactly why I was asking that question.
And this is going to be connecting, you know, eventually to the North-South Greenway. So people are going to be coming out, and they're going to be looking to figure out how to get over the hill. I think if we were getting over Horse Hill, we would do something else, rather than take them up the other side of Redwood Highway.
Okay.
Because that's millions.
That's a good answer, then, thank you, Bob.
And then, Mr. Bailey, the last thing I'll say is, one of the members of the public was asking about, you know, what happens here along Redwood Highway. In speaking with Larkspur, of course, this is in our jurisdiction, so we can't do anything along Redwood Highway. So that's up to Larkspur, and I know Larkspur is doing very similar work to us in terms of advocating for bicycle and pedestrian safety, and so they have indicated that they're going to make an effort to improve the bicycle facilities along Redwood.
Thank you.
Okay. Two sort of informational questions. The Redwood Highway multi-use path that goes by the village and everything, I'm under the impression that that was going to have work done on it. What's the status of that?
Mr. Andrews, you're going to have to wait until the item on the Transportation CIP, because we call out Redwood. It is underdesigned currently to be rehabbed and improved.
Okay. Tree root damage, okay. And then what's the status of the bridge over 101, the Tamal Pius Bridge? Is it still going along, or is it dead in the water?
Well, we're, Caltrans has all these different documents. One of them is called a PID, a Project Initiation Document. That's kind of the first document that says, okay, here's a major capital improvement, we're going to evaluate it and see how it goes along. We are pre-PID, we haven't even gone into the PID phase with Caltrans. We have had informal meetings, I participated with your former mayor first in a couple of those meetings with a big working group. That working group hasn't convened in some time, but I do believe we're kind of due to round that group back up. So I will, if you all agree, I will kind of rally the troops and see if I can get that group going, and see where we are with that project.
And see if you can get a path on both sides of the bridge, because we might want to encourage one for bicyclists and another for pedestrians, if possible.
All options are on the table right now.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, do you need a motion?
Yeah, we can entertain a motion.
Can we just talk about it for one minute, though?
Sure. Yeah, let's keep talking, yes.
I don't have any more questions, I just wanted to express an opinion here. I kind of, first of all, I wanted to tell Mr. Hensel that I appreciate the letter writing, the persuasive, well-written letters, and they're thoughtful and thought-provoking. I'm in agreement with the sort of basic concept that Peter raises, which is that we don't want to implicitly bless something by something else. But it's my own view that that's not what's happening here, and that we're just, as Peter says, I think correctly, and that was a very good response, Peter, we're improving this path in an area which helps anybody who's riding a bicycle, no matter where they're going to in this general area, and we're not committing ourselves to, say, Alto Tunnel instead of Horse Hill. That is a big decision that we need to get into, and that's not the one before us tonight. That's my view, anyway.
And if I can just add to that, I would agree with that. I mean, if anything, this is a safety improvement measure, which, if I learned anything from my accident last year, being hit by a car, actually, not an accident, is, we need to do everything we can to improve bicycle safety. And there are kids using this every day, coming from the east side to get to the schools, and this is going to simplify and make it safer for kids to stay on the trails, stay out of traffic, and get to school safely on a bike, which also means fewer people in cars, which is going to improve traffic. So for a lot of reasons, this is a terrific idea, that's why the BPAC originated it and started it. Public Works actually did the application for the funding, and I'm thrilled to see this move forward. Any other comments, or any great, possible motion, or...
I move that we pass the item as originally...
I move that we pass the item as originally proposed.
Second.
Go ahead.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Beckman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuhnhardt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Andrews?
Yes.
Mayor Avasio?
Yes. Okay, then we will move on to item 5A, Public Hearings. Public hearing to consider introduction of ordinance number 981, amending Title II Chapter of the Town of Corder Madera Municipal Co-Gentle municipal elections to change the town of Corder Madera's municipal elections from June of even number of years to statewide direct primary and to cancel the election currently scheduled for November 20219. And I will turn this over to staff.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. That was a very long-agenda item title.
It was.
I apologize for that.
I kept reading.
We have a lot of issues to take care of in one small agenda title. Staff is just bringing this back before the council based on the direction received at the December 18, 2018 Town Council meeting, where the Town Council held an initial discussion regarding the changes that needed to be made. And those changes were brought about because of changes at the state level, which eliminated the June election as an option and moved the statewide primaries to March. And also moved the election year, the federal presidential election year primaries to March as well. Our ordinance, as it's currently written, refers specifically to June election dates, and it needs to be updated to refer to a more generic date such as statewide direct primary or statewide general election, depending on whether the council preferred a March election or November election in even years. And the direction given to staff at the December 18 meeting from the majority of the council was that the March election date was preferred. So the draft ordinance presented to the council for consideration of introduction includes the term statewide direct primary, which, if approved, would move municipal elections to March of even years. Also included in the draft ordinance is direction to cancel the election currently scheduled for November 2019 and extend the council member terms until the certification of the March 2020 election. The other effect that this ordinance would have would be on those council members that were elected in June of 2018 to serve four-year terms. Since the June election date is no longer an option and the election would be moved up a few months to March of 2022, those council members that would have expired, whose terms would have expired in June of 2022, would then expire upon the certification of the March 2022 election. I think that that...
Wounded.
Yes, yes. I know. I have nothing to help with that, other than it was the governor that signed the legislation. And we just have to fix our ordinance. If anybody has any questions, or if the town manager has anything to add...
There's a lot going on in that ordinance. Is there any questions from council for staff?
What exactly you're asking me, sorry. What exactly do you want the motion to be?
To introduce the ordinance and waive further wave-first reading.
Introduce ordinance 981. Any other questions? I'm going to open up to the public, then, for comments or questions. Hearing none, back to the council for discussion and a possible motion.
Actually, I would guess I should actually say that introduce the ordinance if you feel that staff heard your direction correctly and interpreted that direction correctly.
I don't need discussion unless you guys do.
Nope.
I was just going to say that I'm going to abstain from this because I don't feel comfortable extending my personal term.
Oh, great.
But I know.
I just, I just have one thing.
You guys can make the motion.
But Sloan does, so.
It's like righteousness. I mean, that's why you've got to take one for free.
Well, I'd move to introduce ordinance 981.
That's just fabulous.
I have one discussion, just one.
Oh, sorry.
Just one quick discussion item. Because the power and authority of any government depends upon the consent of the governed. To my mind, the biggest turnout of an election is the best election and the best way to read the consent of the governed. And so this is absolutely what we should be doing.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments, or is there a possible motion?
Would make a motion to introduce ordinance number 981.
Second.
Are we okay? Okay. Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Beckman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuhnhardt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Andrews?
Abstain.
Mayor Avasio?
Yes.
Great. Thanks, Jim. Hope you feel like a champion.
Moving on to item 5B, Public Hearing to Consider Introduction of Ordinance Number 982, Amending Title XII Chapter Use of Right-of-Way to Clarify the Process for Right-of-Way Agreements and Delegate Approval Authority of Agreements to the Town Manager. Turning it over to staff.
Good evening, council members. Staff is recommending that the Town Council consider and introduce ordinance 982, which would amend Chapter 12, 38 of the municipal code to, first, clarify the process for right-of-way agreements, and, second, delegate approval authority of the agreements to the town manager. As background, this proposed ordinance and item follows up on a question and some direction provided by the council at its October 2, 2018, meeting when it discussed wireless communication facilities and the evolving technology and deployment practices. At that meeting, one of the council requests was to explore the possibility of including indemnification provisions, and, in fact, whether or not they already apply, in any approval of wireless communication facilities in order to ensure that the town isn't responsible for any future issues related to the deployment of these facilities in the right-of-way. So staff did take that request. We've reviewed the municipal code. And first and foremost, there are, it's clear that there are existing indemnification provisions already in the municipal code that can be applicable to wireless facilities in the And secondly, in reviewing the existing ordinances, however, staff felt that they should be, or it should be modified to accomplish two things. The first was to ensure that the owner of a wireless telecommunications facility, such as Verizon or AT&amp;T, is a responsible party to the agreement, not just the applicant, who sometimes is a contractor. And two, felt it was important to authorize approval authority and delegate that authority of right-of-way agreements to the town manager. And we drafted it as also his or her designee as well, to allow for compliance with streamlined provisions for processing wireless facility applications. As you know, those are stream, those are by federal regulations. Those are now shortened timelines for those approval. And as such, the timing just may not work for staff in certain circumstances to review and get through the process of approving or denying these applications where it all may, also may have to come to the town council. And I think, in general, staff felt that that authority also should lie with the town manager for, not just those types of applications involving wireless facilities, but also other right-of-way agreements as well. So with that, I'm open for any questions on this. The draft ordinance, as you can see, relates specifically to Title XII of the municipal code, which regulates streets and sidewalks, and generally the public right-of-way. And in Title XII, Section 12 dot 38 relates to right-of-way agreements in which we would require, that would be used to require, you know, a variety of different facilities that are permanently located in the public right-of-way, such as wireless facilities, but there are others as well, other types of things that go, that this would relate to.
Thank you, Adam.
Sure.
Any questions from the council for staff?
Yes. Todd, have you selected a designee, or are you going to retain that authority for now? What?
Someone from my planning team, it would be Adam, or Public Works Director.
Or would it be sort of temporary if you're out of, you know, on vacation?
Yeah, we would operate it. There would be three of us that would be available, the Public Works Director, the town manager, or the planning director.
Okay.
There would be some, always some, one of us is always here.
All right. And then, this doesn't affect the ordinance, but from a policy standpoint, I know the council seeks copies of warrants and checks and stuff like that. Is it possible to include that in the council briefing books?
Would you like to draft it into the ordinance, some direction that the, there would be a report to council of any agreements that are entered into? Or is that a practice that you would ask that the town manager adopt, even though you're not putting it in the ordinance?
I'm comfortable if it's sort of a town policy that you let us know, unless you believe we should put it into the ordinance just so it's in there.
I don't think it's necessary to draft it into the ordinance. I think if you're clear in giving your manager the direction that you would like that information to be reported out, I think that's sufficient.
Okay. Good.
Any other questions? Then we'll open up to the public for comments or questions. Hearing none, back to the council for discussion and a possible motion.
I think, if I can go first, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
Excellent work, Adam and Teresa. That's just exactly right. And my compliments, frankly, to the famous Jim Andrews sitting to my media left. It was a great idea.
You're here.
And I think it's good work. I'm happy to make a motion immediately unless you guys want to talk about it.
Go for it.
Make a motion. So what exactly do we do? We're introducing the ordinance?
Yes.
All right, I'll move that we read and waive first reading or something of the ordinance.
Or something.
Second.
Of 982.
982, right.
Second.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Beckman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuhnhardt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Andrews?
Yes.
Mayor Avasio?
Yes. Moving on to item 6A, Business Items, Introduction and Resolution Number 02/2019, approving a one-time performance bonus to the town manager of $10,950, 5% of base salary. Back to staff for a report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Your town manager has left the room because he has a conflict on this item. The, your manager's contract provides for the council to consider, after doing an annual review, which has been completed, a potential bonus, a one-time bonus of up to 5% of his base salary. Council had directed staff to bring this item forward, and so the item is before you. The 5% bonus would be a $10,950 one-time bonus. It would not increase his pension, and it would be under town policy requiring two readings of this. It would come back before you if you were so inclined to approve it this evening. It would come back at the next council meeting for you to make a final decision on that bonus.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? I will open up to the public for comments or questions. Hearing none, back to the council for comments and a possible motion.
I'd like to just move the motion.
Second.
Okay.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Beckman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuhnhardt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Andrews?
Yes.
Mayor Avasio?
Yes. Okay, thank you. 6B, Summary of Ongoing Town Transportation and Capital Improvement Projects. And this is not something that we will be motioning on and voting, but we are going to provide staff with our feedback and our direction. So, Peter, I think this is you.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Peter Brown, Public Works. I want to spend a little bit of time setting up this item. It's, I apologize for the length of the slideshow, but I did, in discussions with many of you, with members of the public, and with your town manager, we felt like it was time to kind of give a comprehensive look at all the things that are going on in the town of Corder Madera from a capital improvement program standpoint. So to be honest with you all, this is the reason why I came to work for the town of Corder Madera. These are the projects that make me most happy in terms of doing public good. So, and I think the other thing that I did, and when I wrote the staff report, these ideas, I don't know if any of you read them, and it's okay if you haven't read them prior to the meeting, but you certainly should read them before you go to bed tonight. The, the way I laid out the staff report is just something that I always think about when I think about when and where and how and why we should do capital improvements and change the transportation system. But for the first time in a long time, I found myself saying, okay, well, how do I articulate the criteria? What are they? How do they matter? Why do they matter? And so I hope you found the evaluation criteria, which are in rank order, safety, volume, benefits to the number of members of the community, the condition of the facility, the amount of funds we've leveraged from the outside. Those are kind of what I see as the top four reasons for doing transportation improvements. So I hope you found that helpful. And then the other thing I'll say is, I haven't come up with any of the ideas that are in this slideshow or any of these capital improvements. They all existed before I came here. So your prior staff are, deserve a lot of credit. And then the other folks that deserve credit are, in my opinion, the engineering team you have now, Fernando Stefanik, who's not here today, but certainly taking on with a lot of passion, everything that's going on with the sanitary district. And then your two senior civil engineers who are here and are going to assist in this presentation, Jared Barrio and RJ Suko, they've come on in the last six to 10 months, not knowing anything about these projects, and really grabbed them and embraced them and managed them and engineered them and moved them forward and enhanced them. So those are my introductory remarks, and now I'll just walk you through what we consider to be our priority projects. After the slideshow, I'm going to walk you through a spreadsheet, which I don't do often, but I'm going to do tonight. The spreadsheet portion will be much shorter than the slideshow. So Casa Buena Complete Streets, Tamil Vista Complete Streets, these are both originally envisioned as bike lane projects, but certainly sidewalks are needed, other improvements are needed, so we've gone with this vernacular of complete streets for all users. The Paradise Corridor, before I started working here, I came to a meeting where Todd presented on the Paradise Corridor. It is a mess out there. There is a lot of issues. We've broken it down into three phases for you here tonight to look at. We threw the Town Hall Complex Edition in here because it's a current project. It is a capital improvement. It's not necessarily transportation. So if you all played Sesame Street, which one of these doesn't belong, you might want to pick that one. And then the other thing, you can read about the pavement rehab program. Councilmember Andrews asked about the Redwood Highway path rehab. We'll talk about that. And I just put this on as a tickler, the various flood control projects. We're not getting into those. We'll probably do another future meeting where we kind of delve into the specifics of the flood control improvements that we're looking at. So let's start with the top priority in town, and that is the Casa Buena Complete Streets projects, Phase 1. So we've broken it into two phases. You can kind of see it here. Phase 1 is basically the section between Cano and Sanford, along with the Meadow Suite Corridor and Sanford here. And then Phase 2, which is more expensive, looks at widening the roadway, adding bike lanes in one direction and a bike route in the other, as well as the much-needed sidewalk, where, you know, Shel Silverstein, when he went to Mel's, or excuse me, Marin Joe's, wrote his book, Where the Sidewalk Ends. It was right there at Marin Joe's. Phase 1, pardon about that. So Phase 1 is the Sanford-Meadow Suite-Casa Buena Traffic Congestion Relief Project. So this is 100% designed. We would love to see this in construction come this spring or summer. We're looking to refine those documents and get them out to bid. But this intersection, I invite anyone who hasn't to spend time out there, it is confusing. People who live there and work there and use the intersection all the time don't know how to use the intersection. And so it poses safety, circulation, and congestion issues, and I think we have a solution for those. So this is to kind of orient you... So this is to kind of orient you. Here we are at Sanford. This is the existing pedestrian crosswalk here. This, of course, is Tamil Pious. We're located to the west right now as we speak. And then this, of course, is Meadow Suite here. And so what we're looking to do in this particular project is this. So this is what the engineering drawings look like. So we've just kind of highlighted a few of the changes. The crosswalk, really the primary crossing is for this bus stop here. And there's not a lot of destinations here in this area. So this is a safety improvement for sightlines and narrowing the crossing distance to move the crosswalk there. We've also, don't have crosswalks here at Meadow Suite, but we need them. This is kind of that, what you heard from Cheryl Longinotti, the kind of bulbout, kind of narrowing the travel lane here on Meadow Suite. We're also, for the biggest change here is we're eliminating the northbound movement for vehicles on Sanford. So most of the traffic that's generated over here on Meadow Suite in the Cano area will go around to Casa Buena and use this signalized intersection. So this whole confusing movement will be eliminated. And we're looking at an added travel time of, again, 30 to 60 seconds for the folks maybe that are at the library to have to go around the horn. But we think that that trade-off for those small number of users is going to be really beneficial to the overall circulation and functioning of this area.
Peter, can you stop there for one second? So somebody coming out of the library.
Yeah.
They would now turn right. They wouldn't allow them to turn left. Is that what you mean?
No, you could still go right or left. I think most, most people are gonna go, that want to get on Tamil Pious or want to get on 101, are gonna go around to Cano and Casa Buena. Let's say you're Councilmember Kuhnhart, and you want to go to the Christmas Tree Hill, and you've done the thing of driving your car when you probably could have walked to the library, but you've driven it.
Driving my electric car.
Okay, he's got his electric car, okay. So I would say that in the non-peak hour, you could come up here and go to Lakeside. You know, it's a stop sign. There's, the cross traffic on Tamil Pious doesn't stop. But there is a rapid flashing beacon, so some vehicles and some local traffic will use Lakeside. I don't think it'll be a really good option when it's the peak hour and there's a lot of cars on Tamil Pious. You're going to be much better off spending the 30 seconds coming around the horn and using the signal.
Thank you.
Are you doing?
I was gonna take them at the end, but sure. You know, it's up to the mayor. I'm just here at your pleasure.
Meadow Suite at Tamil Pious, there were issues. Folks coming off of Tamil Pious fairly fast and bombing down Meadow Suite. Any changes there? Could we make it one way towards Tamil Pious?
I haven't, I've been apprised and I've seen some emails about that issue, Councilmember Andrews. I have put up some signage there in encouraging folks to slow down. I haven't seen or heard of any incidents, so that's not part of the scope of this, but I could sort of look into it more if you'd like.
One of the things I learned in planning school before you were born was that pedestrians always take the shortest distance between two points, no matter whether it's legal or not. And I'm just a little bit concerned that there's no more shortest distance between, let's say Pete's Coffee or the library and the mall, the town center mall, and that, that some people will go straight across where there is now a crosswalk instead of going over to the east and crossing and then coming back. I'm just.
And Councilmember Kuhnhart, where did you go to planning school? Just out of curiosity. I don't know.
Man, that plaza coming out.
George Washington University.
George Washington University, okay. So at George Washington University, one of the things that I would like to let the folks know there is that, let's say I did want to go to the mall. It's a fair point. So basically, this is uncontrolled, right? So we have a stop sign here. The cross traffic on Meadow Suite won't stop. So you come out of the library, let's say you want to go to the 76 Station even more immediately on that corner, right? You have a couple of options. It's a little bit longer to come over here, I agree. But really, just making this cross, crossing this street here and coming over, when you get to this corner, you're gonna cross wherever is green because you're, you want to get diagonal, right? So it doesn't really matter, you know, that you're at this corner versus this one. Because if you get to this one and it's red, you gotta wait anyway. So the amount of time it's gonna take a pedestrian to walk from the library to, you know, any, the CVS or, or, you know, the postal Safeway, whatever. It's just really minimal. And so for me, the trade-off in losing what amounts to a number of seconds to move the pedestrians out of this really confusing and difficult corner, the benefit outweighs the cost of that added time. Moving on. Phase 2, this is the discussion point for a lot of members of the community that have been emailing and coming to BPAC and talking to all of you. This is what we're calling Phase 2, the Casa Buena Complete Streets. This project is basically from Cano up to the 101 On-ramp in the southbound direction. So we've designed the project. We've made some attempts to separate the sidewalk phase and advance that. We also made some attempts to advance the striping of the bike lanes and repaving of the roadway, but neither of those really worked out. So this project, we'll discuss it more when we get to the spreadsheet portion. But it's a needed project. Again, we're breaking down Phase 1. We just spoke about Phase 2, is you're gonna see what a typical cross-section would look like here. So a new sidewalk where one doesn't exist now, maintain the on-street parking, have a Class 2 bike lane in the southbound direction, and then two more narrow travel lanes to kind of reduce the speeds and help traffic calm out there. And then in the downhill direction, from the path that goes around Horse Hill to Mill Valley, a shero is appropriate. It really helps us to not have to put in two Class 2 bike lanes. We just don't have the width out there. And so what we do, well, certainly in planning and design school at UCLA, we learned that it was important to give the downhill traffic the speed. Those vehicles that, bicyclists that are moving at speed are much more apt to use the shero. And the uphill cyclists, we would like to give them separation and buffer from the vehicles. So we put that in the southbound direction. Typical cross-section again here, when you look at it from plan view, here's some of the multimodal improvements. There, you can see the Class 2 bike lane. We do have to kind of jog the sidewalk in a couple places here because of the steep slopes, and we need to be able to conform to the existing roadway. And so that's why you'll see some of the meandering there, and you can kind of see some areas where we're gonna need to widen the roadway here. And this is around a $2.7 million project, all told. Gonna keep running through these. We have a number of them to cover. So the Tamil Vista Complete Streets project, it's really kind of grown. It was originally, when I came on board, it was add bike lanes to Tamil Vista, but the more we looked at it, the more we realized, you know, the pavement condition is not that good. We should probably replace the pavement. If we do that, we should probably analyze the sewer system and make sure that before we put a new roadway on the top, that everything below it is gonna last a long time. And so really what we've come up with is the Madera to Pfeiffer Complete Streets improvements. There's also the potential for the first roundabout in town at Madera and Tamil Vista. And then Todd pointed out that the Central Marin Regional Pathways Gap Closure Project, the one we spoke about on the consent calendar, is related to this. It really connects to this. Warrnamun connects to Tamil Vista. And so this, we consider a project that's in tandem with Tamil Vista. So just going into a little bit, the main line repairs, here to kind of orient you. Here's Tamil Vista, here's Pfeiffer, and this is kind of one of our maps of the sanitary sewer system. We've analyzed the system. We need to kind of find out where the needs are, but minor repairs we believe are needed. So PS and E, you know, projects, specs, engineering, we're looking at developing that now. And we don't know whether we'll be able to improve this area in this summer or next, but it'll be soon. And it'll certainly be before we do the roadway. The Complete Streets projects is again at the 90% design. And just really quickly, we're gonna repave the road, we're gonna improve the sidewalks, improve the pedestrian crossings, and add Class 2 bike lanes in both directions. We're also gonna narrow the roadway slightly, again, for the traffic calming. We also, we're gonna need to coordinate with our utility providers project prior to construction. And again, we're not quite sure whether we'll be able to do it this summer or next, but we'll know more in a few months. The roundabout at Tamil Vista Madera would be a significant improvement to circulation, especially when all these directions are hit with vehicles at the same time. Roundabouts have a better safety record. They can carry more vehicles per hour, and they do so more safely. And so we've developed, begun the design phase. We really will probably benefit if we tie it to the Complete Streets project from mobilization and construction standpoint. So that's that last bullet there. We don't need to get into this because we already spoke about it, but I had this here in case this item didn't get pulled. Again, this is the Central Marin Gap Closure Project. A typical cross-section from Nellin. Out to Paradise Drive. So I'm gonna do two more slides, and then I'm gonna turn it over to Jared because I'm about to lose my voice, which many of you may be happy about. We've broken this into three phases. Phase 1, the one we're looking at right now, is multimodal safety enhancements and the addition of bike lanes from the Ring Mountain Trailhead to Robin Drive where the new ANCO development is. We're looking to narrow the travel lanes out there, improve school access, ped crossings, add bike lanes. We've got some grant money to do this, safer routes to school between Seawolf and San Clemente. It may end up being a sidewalk widening project or a Class 1 type path, but in any event, it's much needed. And then Phase 3 would be the gap in between. So we have funds, and we're gonna be available to implement this project as soon as possible out here at Phase 1. And probably the following year or two, we'll, we'll do Phase 2. And we're gonna continue to seek funding for the area in the middle. And with that, I'll turn it over to Jared to talk about the Town Hall Edition.
All right, thank you, Peter. So Todd gave us a great comprehensive presentation already about our new Town Hall potential. And so I'll just touch on a couple items that help paint the full picture. So currently, we're looking at a two-story option as it fits the site a little bit better at this location. Having a one-story option would eliminate this access into the parking lot, which we didn't really like too much. So a two-story is a little bit more what we're leaning for, for this particular location. And then proximity to the, the property, we took some boring, or we had a geotechnical engineer take some borings. And, and we investigated a few different spots. And the soil underneath the proposed spot here is, is the most apt. It has the best soil bearing potential. So there's a couple different study mechanisms that we've done that lead us to, if we're at this site, then that's about where we'd, we'd want to, to put the building. Also, from a fronting the street perspective, adjacent to the existing Town Hall that we're standing in, and also has the accessibility from Tamil Pious as well as from the parking lot down below. So where we stand right now, an architect has been engaged to start some plans. They haven't proceeded very much. We're, we're looking at doing a use and needs assessment. So that kind of gives an update with, with where it is. We don't have any plans generated. What you see here is a very conceptual. I just copy pasted just a block here and put it on Google Earth. So not much has been investigated for that yet. So turn it over to RJ here.
So I'm gonna talk a little bit about pavement. So probably over the last, last six months, we, we had a pavement consulting firm come in and look at all the town's roads. They actually inspected every road and came up with an individual rating. And then also did an average and came up and showed that the current PCI, which is a rating between 0 and 100, is 68 for the town of Corder Madera. They've completed the report, and we can make that available to people. But they also wanted to run through several funding scenarios. So here, focus on total budget over a five-year period on this row, and then the PCI after five years, depending on which category you choose to fund. So kind of the minimum is kind of maintain the existing 68, and that's $4.5 million over a five-year period. Should council want to put in more money, if they would put up $700, $7.5 million over a five-year period, we could see our score jump to 73, and so on and so forth. $10 million would get you approximately a score of 78 out of 100. $12.8 would get you about an 84 after five years. So kind of going back to just the pavement management concept, this is kind of a textbook deterioration curve pavement. So brand-new road, it holds a pretty good life for, you know, almost 10 years. And then shortly after, there's a steep degradation. And so 68 is gonna fall kind of right, right in that mark. And so one of the common misconceptions is people, hey, my road's terrible. You know, mine's, mine's worse than the one next door, and you gotta pave mine first. And so certainly, we don't want to leave people stranded, but we do have to balance how we go after our network. And so generally, you'll try to pick off some of the, the low ones and get them up to 100, but they're gonna be the most costly. But at the same time, you're gonna want to pick off roads, a group of roads, to keep them continually up in this upper third. And so looking at tentative paving list for next year, that's kind of what we're doing. We've got a cluster of roads. You can see here PCI, you know, 59, 78, 63, 48, 48. And then we've got a few here that are in the lower category that we're also gonna bring those up to 100. And so this is the tentative list that we're proposing for next year's project. And something of note, also, we came to council not too long ago. PG&E is contributing about $80,000 based on some savings on the work that they did over here in Chapin area.
I wonder if that's still coming, though?
Yes.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
We're actually trying to get a little more, so, yeah.
I would think the bankruptcy would throw that into disarray.
Oh, we should get that check quick then, huh?
And cash it.
And so that's it for pavement, and I'm gonna turn it over to Peter, or Jared for.
Can I ask you one question of pavement before you go on? We annually, and maybe this is not related and maybe it's intimately related, get these grades. Is that what this is, number relates to?
So we'll still get a grade next year even if we don't do a inspection of every road because the model will get updated, and it'll just show that in a year we've deteriorated this much, and we've brought, say, if I come back next year and we didn't inspect it, these all turn to 100.
Yes.
And then in the model that gets plugged in. But then every other road drops a couple points, and then it spits out a new number. But about every two to three years, we get access to MTC funding, and they pay for this inspection and report.
Okay.
So at a minimum, we're gonna want to do that every two to three years. If we wanted it more frequently, then we'd have to dip into our local funds.
Just, I mean, I actually think that our streets seem in reasonably good condition, but out of a vanity stake, I would love to get an A on that report card now.
So, yeah, we're, the county-wide average is a 66. We're at a 68.
D+.
If you have a bell curve, 80 is like, that's like a solid A.
That's where we're going, my friend, 80.
So just keep that in mind.
Could I ask one more? How do you deal with somewhat unanticipated pavement failures? On Summit Drive, for example, there's a corner where I think its rain has undercut the lower edge near 52 or so, and so it's starting to collapse, and there's safety stuff in there. How do, how does that get worked into this priority system? Because it's unanticipated. How do you, how do you address that?
So, you know, in the interim, we're gonna look to our maintenance crews, or if it's work that is beyond their, their capabilities, we're gonna hire it out. But for instance, we had a, an old storm drain that was abandoned and collapsed on Montecito Drive. And so last summer, we weren't expecting it, but we had to fill that all with grout so that it didn't, the whole road didn't collapse. So it kind of depends case by case. But some, it's just potholing, and others, it's a full-depth repair. And others, it's some structure that no one ever knew about that is causing another issue.
RJ, I believe Councilmember Kuhnhart's asking about 57 Summit, which you have.
Is it 57?
Yeah. That work is underway currently, right?
So that's potentially more of a slide, or at least an erosion and undermining issue.
Undercutting on the, on the lower side.
Yeah, so actually, this Friday, we have Geotech, Geotech's going out to drill that site. You'll see it on our spreadsheet as far as kind of priorities and costs. And then we'll be developing some sort of repair or design, and probably involve some drainage improvement as well.
And concrete, yeah. Thank you.
So Councilmember Andrews, hopefully this couple slides right here addresses your questions. But yeah, the, the Redwood High Class 1 pa, Redwood Highway Class 1 path between Warrnamun and San Clemente is another project that we have queued up. It's, it's pretty much ready, fully designed, 95%, about. It's, it's pretty much ready, uh, fully designed, ninety-five percent about. Um, it's about thirty-six hundred feet of, of new, well, rehab pathway. Uh, it used to be eight new pedestrian ramps, but our new north lot, or gravel lot, uh, build-out accomplished four of those. So now we're down to four new ped ramps as part of this project. Um, and a major item of this one is, is the treat, the tree root, uh, damage that, that is really prevalent, um, right, that bordering the Village Shopping Center. Uh, so that's a major focus as part of this, is to correct those intrusions and, uh, better prepare the area so that that doesn't happen in the future. Um, and, and overall, just to improve the pavement condition along that, that existing Class 1 path.
Uh, tree roots, is that a euphemism for, uh, we're gonna lose a bunch of trees along there and we better get ready for the, uh, reaction from the citizenry?
So, uh, using an arborist to identify what, which trees are, are suspect and, and causing that, and, um, and a replacement, um, for those trees would be in order with a, with a better species that doesn't cause that damage in the future. Um, but, yeah, that discussion is gonna be part of this as well.
All right.
Okay, so, um, the last little bit, I'll put you through maybe five or ten more minutes, um, in the spreadsheet here. This is kind of the first glimpse. So for those, uh, that are asking, like, what is Public Works up to, uh, in 2019? Uh, a lot. So I believe that 2019 and 2020, we're gonna deliver more projects and spend more, uh, of the funds that the, uh, town has accrued wisely over the past few years to deliver projects than in any year, uh, in a long time. So here's just a look at those projects. Uh, this is our construction schedule. We don't know if we can, I put the 2020 in question marks, so anything we can't get done this year, uh, we will get done next year on this, uh, priority list. So we're looking, I think, um, Fifty-Seven Summit came up, that's a slide repair. The intersection improvements at Casa Buena Sanford are slated. We have pump station, uh, improvements that are undergoing, uh, currently at Trinidad. A lot of the Tamil Vista work, uh, our current paving program, uh, which the, the contractors have not been delivering well on, uh, is, is gonna get completed eventually. And then we'll get under our new program and we'll hire a different contractor. Um, the Town Hall addition, uh, is also there. And then, uh, many have asked about the High Canal Bank Repair and we'll get that done, uh, before the next winter season, um, comes in. Um, and then we won't spend a lot of time on flood control tonight, uh, but I do wanna come back at a future date and kinda go over, uh, all of the things we're looking at. Uh, many of you saw, there's a flash flood warning that's been issued for our area. Um, three to six inches of rain is a lot, uh, coming to the North Bay, uh, and it's in effect until Friday. So, um, as you can tell, I put this slide together right before the meeting. The last thing I wanted to do is kinda walk you through, uh, the spreadsheet and maybe just, then we'll go to questions. Uh, because one of the things that we do in order to really understand this stuff is we do a comparison and an analysis, and I feel bad, um, given, uh, Mr. Bailey's eyesight. But, let me see if I can zoom in on this as well. And a thousand nights.
Brutal.
I know how old I am. I don't need to be reminded of this.
Welcome to Geezer.
See, when your slide says percent of cost leverage, does that mean we've already got the funding? Is that what leverage means in that context?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Okay, so let's just go through a few of these and see how we do here. Um, so Casa Buena Complete Streets in a, two phases. Um, I kinda wanted to give you the criteria that we use, right? So, the volume, um, is five thousand five hundred cars a day, uh, about forty-eight bicycle, uh, users or pedestrians in the peak hour. The number of collisions we've used, uh, or observed in the last five years. Again, the pavement condition index that RJ spoke about, um, general safety improvements we're looking to do, uh, and then the total costs. You know, again, the percentage of the cost leverage, uh, gives us a good idea when you see these numbers. If the town's paying for a hundred percent of it, that means we don't have any grant funds for it, uh, but we're still considering it a priority. Uh, when you go down here to these projects, like, um, Phase 2 for Tamil Vista, we have a lot of grant money for this. So that's, the town's only paying, um, you know, seventy percent of the costs. And then you go out here to some of these Paradise Drive improvements and the cost to the town is less than fifty percent of the total cost. So these are no-brainers for me, especially when you come back to the other criteria that we use, the volumes. Look at the volumes we have on Tamil Vista, sixteen hundred vehicles in a day, um, you know, fifteen hundred out on Paradise. And again, when you, where are your collisions? Where are, where are danger, where's dangerous conditions occurring? Well, eight collisions, three of them severe, that's a big number for the town of Corder Madera. Twelve collisions on Tamil Vista, um, that's important. So when we combine all of these things, how many users are we gonna benefit? How dangerous is the roadway? How important is the safety? And then again, how much leverage, uh, funds will we get? Um, that's how we come up with our project ranking. It's not because we like a neighborhood more than another, or we think, you know, a certain, uh, place is better than another. It's really is over objective criteria. And so, um, I know s, this spreadsheet, a version of it, was sent to you with a packet, uh, but I can also update that and, and send this back up to you. Because I did add the peak hour, uh, bike and ped counts, which we've just conducted. Again, these are January counts. So, this one to me is the most interesting. If you look at, um, the middle of Tamil Vista, uh, at the Center Marker Trail, that's by far the heaviest pedestrian and bicycle activity. So, there's no, just no doubt that we have to do pedestrian and bicycle improvements at that location. Um, so, um, I think that's probably enough, uh, to spend on this, uh, spreadsheet, but I'm certainly happy to answer any questions you all have.
Any questions from the council?
David. I, I don't know about the, uh, use of the word at UCLA, but to me, the, you should've been, you should've been using the reciprocal, uh, number. That is, if we're not getting any boost from outside the town, it's zero percent leveraged. And if we're getting, uh, forty-four percent of the money from, or I should say, um, uh, fifty, fifty-six percent of the money from outside, that's the number that should be expressed as the percentage of leverage. It's just a more intuitively, uh, positive way of expressing the outside money that we are leveraging.
As Mayor Ravasi would say, what's your question, Councilmember Coonard?
Just to dig at UCLA?
Gotta do it, gotta do it.
Do we have any questions up here?
Eli has.
Eli has. Thanks. Uh, so are you looking for direction like prior, and so we've got the, say, the tier, we've got like the tiers now. Are you looking for prioritization within those tiers, or is that what we're doing here?
You just wanna bless it, right?
Well, thank you. That's actually a really good question, Councilmember Beckman. So at the recommended action part, I tried to break it down. So I said, um, does this criteria make sense to you? Are we looking at the right things? Are we missing anything? So do let us know if you like the criteria. Um, the other question, uh, we had was on the tiered ranking. So, the ones that are what we consider top tiers that we're moving forward with at the next year or two, we gave a number-one ranking to. Um, and then, uh, we, do we have the right high-cost and high-priority projects, um, in, in this, in this spreadsheet? I think we do, but we're certainly open to add ones that aren't there. Um, and then the other thing I did in the staff report, as you all read, um, was I kinda spent some time on Casa Buena Complete Streets, Phases 1 and 2. Um, and so we did, uh, give you an option there. If you felt like the ranking using these objective criteria, um, is not to your liking, we can certainly move, move that project up. Uh, and then I kinda outlined in the staff report, uh, what that means to staff. Um, and I'll just go over it here for the public. So if Casa Buena Complete Streets Phase, uh, the delivery options include, you know, keeping the project where it is, it's still gonna be a priority, we're gonna seek grant funds for it. Um, if we choose to advance the project, um, under, uh, Option B, I kinda went after what I thought those would do, and that's, uh, seek sidewalk, uh, grant funds, uh, from agencies like the Transportation Authority Marin, um, finish the detailed design phase and prepare a big package. And then, uh, kind of absent our success, whether we do it or not, in seeking grant funds, be prepared to fund the fo, project fully using, um, town-only funds. Um, so those are kinda the things I outlined for you all.
Okay, what time horizon could you do the Conroe to 101 Onramp?
Target 2022 for completing construction.
Completing construction, so that's basically not this summer, but do it the following year.
Yeah. Well, it's 2019 right now.
Right.
So, um, because of the slide I showed you previously, that showed we're looking to deliver like twelve million dollars with the projects, and we have all these other ones, and we're a staff of, uh, three people, um, it really is, uh, I think one of the comments from the public said, you know, this looks to me a lot more like a capacity issue than a funding issue, and that may be accurate. Um, but if we were to do what I outlined in the staff report, uh, my best guess at earliest construction would be 2022 in lieu of 2023. So it's advancing it one year.
Okay.
And part of that process is also to apply for grant funding?
Yeah, it gives us a little time to aggressively seek the sidewalk funds and the ped enhancement funds. Um, to be honest, I don't think we could manage another major construction project. Um, so, uh, I guess the only other way to deliver it would be, uh, to look to push something else out. Um, so that, that becomes a more difficult, uh, conversation using these criteria.
Okay. Well, if you go back to your slide where you showed, introduced the, uh, Casa Buena, there was a picture?
Yeah, I think I got that picture from you.
Uh, I think you got it from Patty. But, basically, very often when you're driving on that street, you'll see two moms pushing strollers with toddlers in tow. And one of these days, uh, my nightmare is we're gonna get a phone call that, that family, uh, has ended up in Marin General. And then, you know, I would really like to push up putting in the sidewalk as soon as possible. We should've done it years ago, but we didn't have the funding or the, uh, engineering resources. But, um, I, I would push that up, uh, you know, uh, ahead of some of the Paradise Drive improvements.
Jim, do you have a question? I'm sorry.
No, okay, go ahead. I'm sorry.
We have to listen to the public before we're allowed to make our comments.
I know. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
That's where you're at.
Rules follower. Any other questions? Okay, then we're gonna open up to the public for comment or questions. If you can please give your name and address, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Patty Stolier, fourteen-eleven Casa Buena Drive, founder of the Safe Sanford Society. Okay, um, I just have like eight quick bullet points. First is, um, in nineteen ninety-seven, a bunch of my neighbors sent letters to the town saying how dangerous the intersection at Sanford was. And Thursday, it's gonna be addressed. So twenty-two years later, we are on it.
Is that a complaint or a criticism?
It's, it's a, uh, it's a kudos to you.
Back end it.
Uh, then in two thousand and ten, Alta did a design, and we have copies of that, design work for the Phase 2 on Casa Buena. That was two thousand and ten, that was only nine years ago. And then in August of two thousand and fifteen, it got a number, fifteen dash oh-two-one. So we were very excited about that when Dave Bracken said it would probably be a couple of years until it got completed. That was two thousand and fifteen. Um, and then, um, we, uh, a couple of years ago, I met with one of the town's staff and I was very concerned about the safety issue and asked if they would please walk down Casa Buena with me. And the answer was, God, no, it's too dangerous. So, that really brought it home for me. Uh, and then, um, uh, we've been interested in finding out what the population is on Casa Buena. Uh, there are a hundred and sixty units, we assume, and somewhere between two hundred and sixty and three hundred pedestrians there. Ninety students, uh, are supposedly in that region or more. Seems like safe routes would be a good funding source for that. Um, and then, um, it's also a destination to go to the library, to the bus stop and to the shopping center, so everybody's walking down Casa Buena. And as Jim pointed out, that family, I see them almost every day with the two strollers and the tandem, um, toddlers next to them, and it reaches on a blind hill over to the center of the road. So there is someone gonna come up over that hill and I just pray that I'm not there when that happens. Um, so, you know, it has to be, how, how many of those people are expendable out of the five or six that are on there? And, um, I know that at least one council member really has a newfound appreciation for the urgency of providing safe routes for bicycles. And, um, that was actually a quote from seven thirty-nine. Uh, "We need to do everything we can to improve bicycle safety," Mayor Ravasio said tonight. And, um, Mr. Brown said, "I have Casa Buena on here because it is the top priority in town, and yet it's in a third tier." So, a little confused by that. And, "We absolutely need to use the two-point-seven million dollars from the sales tax override money to fix this very dangerous situation." And I think that's everything. Uh, twenty-two years from now, it'll be twenty forty-one, and I'm gonna come back when we're unveiling the new sidewalk and bicycle lane.
Jane Greenbaum, Casa Buena, just have a couple of more comments than I had in writing. Um, so, we keep talking about these objective criteria. These, these are very, very, uh, deceiving. Number one, if you look at Paradise Drive improvements, you've got a volume of total of forty thousand with eight collisions. And this is not in the last five years, it's from two thousand and twelve to two thousand and sixteen. So I have no idea what the current, uh, statistics are. And then you have Casa Buena with seven thousand, with seven, uh, seven, uh, collisions. So, you know, you, as we all know, you can take numbers and you can read them any way you want to read them, but they, they don't tell the full story. Uh, also, the, the, the volume is, the volume of pedestrian and bicycle traffic on Casa Buena is suppressed. It's suppressed because there are no sidewalks. Many people will not walk Casa Buena Drive. Many people will not, I, I won't take a bike down Casa Buena Drive. Uh, you know, I walk it until I get to a place where, where I think there's a bike lane. So, you know, these numbers do not, are not objective. They're, they don't tell a clear story, and I think they should be given, uh, less weight than, 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 uh, that you're being asked to give them. Because, uh, you know, people aren't walking there, so obviously, you're not gonna have collisions. It'd be like saying, let's take drowning statistics in a place where there's no pool. So, I, I know that's a bit far out there, but, but, so these statistics, I don't think, are compelling in, in evaluating what the priority should be on, on these projects. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cheryl Anchenati, Tamil Vista Boulevard. Um, I just wanna comment about the Redwood Highway Path, which is something that's been discussed in the B-PAC for probably a couple of years. And note that the Smart Train tracks are expected to, um, be working, getting the, the route to Larkspur, uh, at the end of this year, at the end of twenty nineteen. So if we defer, um, the rehab of the Redwood Pathway, we're really missing an opportunity for, um, employees to be coming on the train and using their bike to get to the village and get to Amy's, um, restaurant and so on. So, um, I'd like that to be a consideration that you, um, make. And I, I know there's trade-offs here and they're difficult, but, uh, I think that's something to think about.
Thank you.
David McPherson, Corder Madera Avenue. I think I started with the first B-PAC in two thousand and six, and I've never seen a document like was just presented. And it's just, I think, a really exciting time to be a citizen in Corder Madera where we've got, uh, tax revenues that have been approved, we've got, uh, town managers on top of things, and, uh, Public Works and Engineering Staff that are firing on all, all cylinders. So, I don't really have any comments in terms of pushing one project over another. Uh, we've worked on m, most of these for the better part of ten years, and, uh, I trust Public Works to, uh, allocate their resources and, and staff and, uh, grant money as it's been laid out. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further comments from the public? Okay, then if not, we will bring it back to the council for discussion, comments. And again, we are providing feedback to the staff. We are not voting on anything on this.
And Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if I can just have one quick thing. Um, this is a very unique conversation, too. I just wanna, for a little bit of perspective, um, and you've all lived it for many years, we have over fifty capital improvement projects in our budget right now. And we've just highlighted what's before you now. These are our priorities. in our budget right now. And we've just highlighted what's before you now. These are our priorities. Um, and it's not a, it's not a conversation about money. We have the money to do all these projects. We could actually do all these projects if we had a staff of fifty. We could do them all in the next twelve months and pay for it. We have the funding. That's the good news. It's bandwidth. And any one of these projects, I think, there's arguments for priorities, you know, to move one up over the other. Um, but they're all major priorities, and I think it's just if someone ends up, if something gets done in twenty twenty-two, I think it's a remarkable accomplishment for us as a town to what we've done and what the staff has put together in really a half a year. It's remarkable. Um, so, just a little perspective, I would think if I was a community member and I was looking at this sheet, um, I'd be really excited to see my project up on that board. Um, it's a huge accomplishment, and it is a huge priority for this town, so.
Thank you. Uh, discussion, feedback, anyone from the council?
Go ahead.
I think that this is a very good turnout of the considerations and the criteria. I think it's a difficult uh job to to specify one, two, three. Um, I I have to say that when some numbers are presented, I've, they're, they have every appearance of objectivity. If there's one street that's got sixteen thousand vehicle volume and twelve serious uh collisions, that's gotta be more uh immediately addressed than one that has twenty-two hundred um traffic volume and one uh serious uh collision. I mean, to me, that's an objective trade-off, and I I can't, it's hard for me to find a way to improve what you've laid out. I think I could, you know, angle here and angle there. I I think one of the ones that the mayor referred to, at least indirectly, which is, if we give ourselves time to draw in more funds from outside, that is, have a higher leverage number, uh, that is a potential benefit of a little bit of delay, although I don't see any of these as being delayed. I I have to agree with the town manager. These are all sort of top priority. We just gotta triage. We were forced to, resources say we're forced to triage. So I I can't give you alternate direction from what you've given us. I think it's uh, it's sophisticated, and it's pretty good.
Anybody else? Yes, Jim?
I have one question. In terms of getting outside funding, what items or issues can you raise that will help or hinder us in terms of getting that funding?
Councilmember Andrews, that's a, that's a really good question. So um, the criteria that you see before you are the same criteria that is used by funding agencies. Um, the one criteria that's missing that has been brought up is what we call disadvantaged communities. Um, and the state's active transportation program has put a big emphasis on disadvantaged communities, which is basically measured in two ways. One is income, and the other is ethnic diversity or uh languages, non-native language, English speakers, that type of thing. Unfortunately for us, we don't compete well at the statewide level, um, because we don't have any disadvantaged communities. So if you go to the Cal Enviro Screen website, they define disadvantaged communities by uh certain percentages, um, income below the median a- a- average for the region, um, and and high levels of, say, school lunch programs and those type of things. So there's a bunch of criteria in there. Uh, one of the things about the one project we did get ATP funds for that you approved earlier today, uh, that was kind of shocking. It was the only um project in Northern California that didn't have a disadvantaged community that got ATP funds. Um, so that's kind of the story of the active transportation program at the state level. There are other funding options. So um, local funds, uh, the Transportation Authority of Marin, um, state safe routes of school, they're gonna ask us the same questions. How many people live there? What's the volume of vehicle traffic moving up and down the roadway? What is your five-year collision history? We have to report all these things when we apply for the grant funds. Um, so, and this, these, all these numbers are publicly available. So um, what I would suggest we do, uh, and I know we're, a lot of us are talking about this particular project, Phase Two of Casa Buena Complete Streets, is really spend a year looking at um the grant funds we can get, go after them all, um, and, you know, see what we do. The last thing I'll say about this question of funding priority, we went for grant funds for this. We didn't get them. So um, to me, uh, we we have a package, we can resubmit. It's very easy to clean it up and turn it in again. I'm not sure that we're gonna go from getting fifty, we got fifty-five points um on a scale of a hundred, and the cutoff was eighty-eight or eighty-nine points or above. So we're a long way in the active transportation program from getting funds for this project. So what I would recommend you consider doing, um, and I can bring this back to you at a further date, is maybe narrow down this project. Um, we'll get it designed, we have the money to do that, we should move forward with that. Uh, if we don't get any uh construction funds, maybe we downscope this to a Warham bike path improvement. Maybe this becomes a Project Three, uh, and maybe this becomes a Project Two. Um, and I outlined the best I could in the staff report, uh, what it means for us to have a Project Two priority for that uh Phase Two.
Okay, well, in terms of uh the Casa Buena uh Phase Two, I would just point out that that particular census block, uh, let's see if you, or census block or census block group, okay? The townwide median income in two thousand and ten was a hundred and thirteen thousand. That particular block, their median income was seventy-five thousand. So in terms of our town, it's not the richest neighborhood in town, okay? In terms of uh the Hispanic population, townwide, it was seven point seven four percent. This particular block is, was thirty percent. Uh, in terms of age of the population, townwide, the median age was forty-five. This particular census block was thirty-six years old. So it's, you know, a young population, and uh, I don't know whether that will help or hinder us in terms of applying for grants, but uh...
We will use that to our advantage for the local sources. Unfortunately for the state sources, we have to compete statewide. So we don't, we don't do that well on a statewide basis.
Go ahead, Eli. You were ahead of me.
Oh, thanks. Um, okay, well, first of all, I I too agree that your criteria looks solid to me. I think, you know, obviously, volume and safety are the two top uh criteria, and then how much of that funding has to come out of our own pockets is a less important but still important third uh criterion, so I think that's good. Uh, and with those criteria, I have full faith in your ability to determine the rank of the project. Uh, I am very sympathetic to the, to the concern that important projects will be, to quote uh, uh, correspondence from a, from a resident, important projects will likely uh be kept on the back burner indefinitely. That's a serious problem. Uh, I do see, though, that all these projects up here have dates attached to them. Uh, I know that I'm fully committed to making sure that we meet those dates. I know you are. Uh, I don't think there's any reason to believe that we might fail uh to deliver on that. So to me, it seems like uh the the ranking as presented uh makes sense and is going to lead to these important projects all being completed. Uh, and then the, the only thing that kind of jumps out at me as not on here is uh climate adaptation stuff, but I know that we have just awarded a contract to develop the climate adaptation plan, so I'm assuming that that is why there are no climate adaptation measures uh listed here. Is that correct?
Councilmember Beckman, it's also because we're focusing on the transportation project. So we began, in the town hall, we began to start to look into um the the flood control projects. Um, this hasn't been fully developed yet, but the climate adaptation plan is certainly in here. Um, so yeah, we just, we just need to spend more time on that.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
So just real briefly, um, Jean, you write a great persuasive letter. Uh, it was, made me, I read it twice, actually, and thought it through, so you definitely have um... Um, and Patty, you know that you have great moral authority here and are a persuasive speaker, so you're, you've always been one of mine, I think, our favorite people in town, so we, please don't think there's any failure to acknowledge the sincerity and sort of the importance of your comments. I also, just on a personal level, I run that at least twice a week. Um, really early in the morning, now it's dark in the mornings. I bought myself like a reflecting vest thing so that I don't get killed. I'm not insensitive to the danger over there. I think it's a real thing, but part of our lives are prioritization, and Peter did a very responsible and diligent job. You deserve great compliments and your staff. This is first-class work product. Um, and I think I support it the way it is because it just makes sense under the circumstances. So please don't think we've forgotten about it. It's just it, it is where it is. So that's my, that's my story, and I'm sticking to it.
And I would echo that also. Thank you so much, I know, for your time and your your comments on this, but Peter, I think the way you've evaluated this makes a lot of sense. Um, and I would like to see us take a little more time on the Casa Buena project and see if we can get some grant funding for it and make sure that we can get it done right. Because we've been, we've actually been reasonably successful on lots of other projects in getting grant funding, even when we thought we couldn't, and, you know, you never know. And um, some of these other ones were just, you know, they're all important. It's just really, really difficult to try to prioritize within all these, because, you know, there's lots of issues with all of these that, you know, are gonna get fixed by these projects. Um, and I think you've taken on the very difficult task of trying to quantify the prioritization. I think you've done a terrific job of it, and I would concur with the way it's done right now. So thank you. Is that feedback, then? I think we've done that. Okay.
So does the sanitary district need to meet? Is there anything to talk about?
What's that?
Do we need to meet the the sanitary district?
Uh, yes.
We do?
Rebecca says we do, so Rebecca says we do, then we do. So we're gonna go to Town Manager and Council reports first. Town Manager?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, just a couple of quick updates. They're on our website, but uh your Public Works team will be holding a private Sewer Lateral Ordinance Workshop on January twenty-ninth at six P.M. I have copies if anybody wants it, but it'll also be on the website. Um, a couple disaster preparedness efforts that are moving forward. Um, and Councilmember, or Vice Mayor Andrews has also been helping staff with this, but we are uh finalizing the Corder Madera Chipper Days, uh, and they're no longer at the the lot out from the village. We're actually bringing our chipper program to neighborhoods. And so Meadowcrest was the first. Uh, Meadowcrest also, with some of those efforts, it helped uh help them receive recognition to be a firewise neighborhood, so they're the first one in the, in the town. And uh, over the coming year, we're, our effort, uh, through the work of Todd Lando, who is now a contractor with us through the fireside, um, we wanna become a firewise community like Mill Valley, and I think that's important. So the other thing it also does is just like we, the efforts we make on the flood system, control system, it helps with flood insurance up to twenty percent. Uh, this also will help people in the fire area reduce their insurance by twenty percent, being a firewise community and neighborhood. So really excited about that. Um, the other one is, uh, we're continuing with our certified first aid training and CPR with our defibrillator training, and it's uh next to our Saturday, March twenty-third and May fourth at nine A.M. and ten A.M. respectively. And so, again, these are on our website. And then, as you know, council approved-
Isn't the one on the nineteenth?
I'm sorry, I'm going fast. Uh, March twenty-third. Is that, okay, I'm just, I don't have that. I think that one's full already, yeah. And then we also entered a contract with HDL Services, um, again, to really, um, to to analyze and help us protect our most sacred revenue or sales tax revenue. And so I'm really excited. Uh, I gave a copy to council. Uh, we'll put this on our website, but you'll see quarterly reports like this. It compares us to the county, it talks about our revenues, how we're doing, and it gives us projections, and it also shares the top twenty-five producers in our town. And so um, this is a great document, and so I'm really excited to share that with the council and the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember reports. Yes, David?
Couple of things from the transportation sector. I attended a meeting this Monday, yesterday, um, of the Projects and and Operations Committee of the uh Transportation Authority of Marin, and there are two kind of exciting things that are coming to life. One of them is the um Electric Vehicle Infrastructure Program. It's just really being uh launched, prioritized, as a group of advisors come together. Uh, I think that we should plug into that uh and try to get some additional uh charging stations. I noted that over this um holiday break, the, all of the charging stations that were operational at our own um village mall were a hundred percent occupied every time I tried to plug in. Um, and the second one is the launch of of something called MarinCommutes.org. Um, the county has always wrestled with how do we get information out about helping commuters, uh, find a bus, find a ferry, uh, find a van pool, find a, helping employers uh bring people into their jobs without parking up all of the customer spots in town, and uh things, challenges like that. And so Marin Commutes is taking those challenges on. This site has already been launched, and it is ripe with, uh, I mean, it is full of very ripe information and current information. Simply MarinCommutes.org, and I hope that it becomes an everyday uh phrase for us. And the final thing is that um because of my work with the county's renewable energy group, I've been uh talking just a little bit with representatives of MCE who are excited about perhaps helping us relaunch a um public, let's get uh the deep green participation level above five percent where we're stuck. Uh, let's see what we can do together to uh launch that. More on that in a later time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I attended the Central Marin Sanitation Agency Board of Commissioners meeting last week. The plant is running well and under good management. Uh, the rain events, recent rain events, did not pose any problem, but there was a huge spike uh in the volume of wastewater that they had to treat. Uh, the big talk right there is that they're uh preparing to award a contract for a new cogenerator that will basically turn the biogas that uh that is produced by all the uh waste that they extract from the wastewater. Uh, that biogas will be used to generate electricity, so that's a pretty uh, pretty exciting project with good sort of renewable energy implications there. Um, I also attended-
Do you know how much, Eli? How much power are you generating?
So there's three options. There's a, I think a seven hundred and fifty kilowatt is the smallest option. There's like a, there's like a one megawatt, and there's a one-point-one megawatt.
That's awesome.
Uh, and I think it looks like the board is leaning towards the one-point-one megawatt because the, the price differential is not that much, and we're all thinking that we might as well max this thing out.
Agreed.
Yeah, so that's a, thanks, good question. Uh, so that's that. And then I attended the League of, the League of Cities, uh, North Bay Divisions, uh, meeting, was that two weeks ago? I know Todd and Peter were there. Uh, we discussed uh the CASA compact, which is uh an attempt to sort of create this giant uh sort of affordable housing uh program that's gonna span the entire, what, nine-county Bay Area? Is it nine?
Yep.
Yeah, so uh, it it's a huge undertaking, and I think uh still, still somewhat nebulous, looking quite expensive, and my concern remains uh that it's not going to apportion the burden for building houses based on the worst offenders in terms of who's, who's adding the most jobs without adding, you know, housing to go with it. Uh, I know that Marin County is not the prime offender, and I I don't think that we should be treated equally uh in that situation. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Bailey?
I don't have any reports, other than comments about two committees I serve on. One of them is that the Legislative Committee, um, Eli, you'd mentioned that you might be interested in coming to the next one. Jim came to a couple over the last few months. There's another sort of emergency one happening Friday, January twenty-fifth at four o'clock in the afternoon. So nothing like, well, three o'clock is the regular meeting, four o'clock's when Senator McGuire's coming. You can come to the whole thing if you'd like, but if you, I think what you're probably interested in is McGuire and what he's gotta say about-
Sure.
CASA, among other things. And um, uh, so that's it. So you can come at three to get the regular meeting. Four is when the senator will come. Nothing like talking about Marin County legislation at four o'clock on a Friday afternoon, but that's what we're doing. Right? No, 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 not in Sacramento, here in, in, it'll be at the Civic Center.
Oh, I thought, was the last one in Sacramento?
No, it was Big Pink.
Oh, I thought you were schlepping all the way to Sacramento for that.
No, it's in the courthouse.
That's wonderful, okay.
It's in, it's, it's like a public meeting room, I'll give it to you.
Sweet, okay.
And then the second thing is, I've been receiving daily emails for about four or five days about this PG&E bankruptcy. So if anybody's interested, I can give you whatever the latest is. I'm happy to share them with you. There, um, there were two public announcements today from PG&E and the uh Public Service Officer of PG&E, and I think something from the Public Utilities Commission. Um, they're not particularly meaningful yet. Everybody is cautious and wondering what will happen. Um, everybody in their first breath says there's, there is no expected impact on our service. So I'm sure there's some long-term impact, and it's very much in the air whether, you know, how this will all flesh out, but the purpose of this message- know, how this will all flesh out, but the purpose of this message was to let everybody know, A, I have more information if you'd like it, although I don't recommend it, it doesn't seem interesting or informative yet, and number two, there's no discernible impact in the near future to us.
Do they, are they going to be able to meet the collateral calls on their long-term power contracts?
Well, it's not at all clear how any of this is going to work out yet.
Okay.
You know, if they declare bankruptcy, then the court will instill protection for them, which means that there's no risk that no matter what investor says about anything, that it's going to jeopardize their future.
Okay.
They went through a reorg previously.
19 years ago. And there was a law passed last year to protect them from the first set of North Bay fires. So they consistently receive kind consideration by our legislature and by our court system.
And wouldn't have to show for it.
Nothing, Eli, that's how I feel about it.
Thank you, Slav.
Nothing to report except I attended the Legislative Committee hearing with Senator McGuire, and then also the CASA briefing, and it's going to be sort of like last year all over again.
I attended a Twin Cities Disaster Preparedness Council meeting, which was interesting. I think the main thing that was interesting was a lot of conversation about the LRAD testing, very, very positive. People were excited about that, think that would be a huge step forward in improvement. Also attended a Community Connection meeting, which I have not been attending for the past six months because I haven't been able to attend many meetings at all, and just, it's kind of amazing what's going on. We just started our second year as a federal grant, and the amount of work and programs that we have is just amazing.
What committee is this?
This is the Anti-Drug Coalition.
With Linda Han and all them?
What's that?
Linda Han and all that?
Yeah, yeah, Linda Han's heading it up, but we have now like three paid staff members and, you know, it's extremely...
That's good work, Bob.
It's good, we're making a lot of great progress, so it's terrific. And one of the things I've been fascinated by for years or thought about was, anybody else ever heard of Coffee with a Council Member? And I've thought about, wouldn't it be fun to start it here?
I get it.
Did you?
Yes.
Well, the other night I was sitting in Cafe Verde talking to Tony, and I agreed to do it. We're doing it Saturday morning.
Nice work.
At 10:00 a.m., Coffee with the Mayor. Todd Cusamano, I think, may be attending as well, so if you want to attend, you can, you certainly don't have to. We're going to advertise it on Nextdoor, the idea is just public outreach and trying to get people to talk and hear what they have to say about the town, but I'm inviting all of you, not asking you to, obviously, you know, this is definitely just something to see how it works, but if you want to come and try, we can start bringing other council members in, maybe we can do it once a month and give people a chance to talk and converse. I know the Coffee with the Cop was really successful last year, and, you know, lots of people showed up for that, so we just thought we'd give it a try and see what happens.
I think it's a great idea.
Time and location again? 10:00 a.m., Cafe Verde, this Saturday till 11:30. So, yeah, tell anybody who wants to come, and, you know, the idea is just public outreach, hear what people have to say and continue to give feedback about what we're doing.
Thanks for the invite.
Sure. And that's all I have to report. So now we move on to the review of the draft agenda for the upcoming council meeting.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, your staff met, and we are finalizing our 2019 work plan based on the council retreat and direction of priorities. And so this is a light agenda, but you'll see something from me shortly in the next couple of days, starting to set the first quarter agendas with our plan and make sure we're on the same page, so.
And just to clarify, once we adjourn, we're going to start the sanitary district meeting, right?
Yes, we have to do that because I published an agenda.
And I will entertain a motion to adjourn. I believe Mr. Kuhnhardt has a...
Just a commentary that today is Martin Luther King's birthday, the actual birthday, and reflected that 46 years and three days ago, Walter Cronkite gave, did the last interview of President Johnson 10 days before he passed from a heart attack. And one of the things that President Johnson said in that interview, which was almost entirely focused on civil rights, because that's where President Johnson really made affirmative change during his time, was that the greatest unresolved political issue facing our country remains civil rights. That was 46 years ago, and it's still true.
So you're asking that we adjourn tonight?
I'm asking us to adjourn in the memory of Dr. Martin Luther King.
But before we do, could I, please?
Sure.
I am just, I feel that transparency is really important, and I think it's important that we put information out there, it's also important that that information be intelligible to the public. I know that this is our first run at a new agenda format. I complained to you guys about the previous agenda format, I'm not sure that this one is really all that much easier for, you know, Joe Citizen to just like, oh, what's going on at town hall tonight? Glance at it, it's a lot of text, a lot of that text is bold, the entire first page doesn't tell them really anything. I would ask that we maybe think about slimming this down. I mean, these are paragraph-long titles, and I think it needs nothing more than a phrase, you know, what are we talking about? There may be legal reasons behind the format of this, but I would find it hard to believe that there's nothing we can do to make this a little bit more easy to understand at first glance. That's all, thanks.
I agree with some, with the slimming concept, but I like the plain English explanation of what is going on here, and I think the overall formatting of the front page is better than before, but some, I agree, some slimming perhaps, and maybe some...
The whole thing, the whole thing. Yeah. So is there a second on the adjournment motion?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we are adjourned, and we are now going to convene the meeting of the Corder Madera Sanitary District. Is there any public comment on the sanitary district? Hearing none, then there is nothing on the agenda, then is there a motion to adjourn the sanitary district?
Wait, isn't there a draft agenda or something?
Wait, there is something.
Review the draft agenda, and...
Which also has nothing on it.
Todd had wanted to have the meeting in order to, we had an agenda item on this agenda, and it was pulled at the last minute, and we decided to go forward with posting the agenda because it was the first scheduled meeting for which we had promised the public there would be a separate sanitary district meeting, and the town manager thought it would be a good opportunity for him to make a few announcements, take public comment, review draft agenda, and then adjourn. But then he made the comments during the town council about the sewer lateral public meeting, that's what he wanted to announce at this one.
The other item is reviewing the draft agenda, which is before you for next meeting.
Are there any comments on the draft agenda? Item 8A, I believe, yes.
I have a general question. How often does the sanitary district have to meet?
We don't, Councilmember Andrews, we don't have to meet. We typically, I believe there's going to be a busy time coming forward, so I think part of this struggle to organize our agendas so that they were discernible and you weren't meeting as a different board and a different item was to have all the council first, then move into the sanitary district, and I think that should work, we're certainly going to try it for a little while. So the short answer to your question is, we're going to bring items to you whenever they're needed, so.
Will we cancel the meetings if there's no business?
We certainly can, yeah. We can post a cancellation of the meetings, yeah. This was a little odd because...
Right, no, I understand, I understand.
One concern I have is that if it's a sanitary, if it's an issue for the sanitary district that will require brain power, and if it's end of the evening, and we've had a long, regular council meeting, I don't know how much bandwidth will be available to actually study the issue, so think about that.
Okay. Yeah, it's a good point. Kind of makes it say that it's a lower priority if, you know, we do it at the end of the evening after we've done everything else.
Can I make a comment, Mr.? It would, we did actually discuss that briefly, and we came to the conclusion that if there were sanitary business item, it would be at the end of the business item of the regular town council meeting anyways, because we had split it up so that the town items were heard and then the sanitary district items were heard. So regardless, it was at the end of the agenda.
Okay. I guess we'll try it.
Okay.
Okay. Is there, so then I need a motion to adjourn?
Seconds.
So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Second meeting adjourned. That was complicated.